Talking about the medical, is it right?
Right. Yeah, I can do my way back to the party. She went to the party for my father. Although he's a little problematic.
Yeah, I don't respond to him.
I know, but don't get, what do y'all think? Probably would've been here on the party. They got one on that.
We would probably have to change it. We would probably go to make sure that we change it like our access.
I'll say this to my wife.
Yeah, take that.
My wife worked at my place.
So they're changing, I'll get you some.
All those.
Yeah, I was thinking instead of like.
Yeah, probably.
I enjoy some places.
Right.
Making it sound like. I'm buying a place, you know. But it was also maybe fresh. So it's kind of, I don't know. Starting with restaurants, like restaurant, getting to do. Yes, yes. No, I mean this study had to be designed to make sure, I'm sure even him and President ever saw this. And that was never one happy company talking after he left.
Yeah.
Yeah. This was just a legend over this. Not so long as this is something.
Yeah.
I'll get you some new books and I'll get you some cars.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you.
That'd be good.
I thought of you, whatever, yes.
Appreciate it.
Yes, yes. And if he does. Well, he looks like he wants to shoot that in the theater. Shoot free out. Oh, it's a dude. Yeah. Says he thinks this is like two of them. Yeah. Well, I ain't gonna do that Saturday.
Yeah, we're gonna be there on Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah.
It says something about you gotta spend, go to your pay pal. And you didn't have a pay pal. So I thought. But it's like, don't let me miss somebody. So I said, do you have your help?
Well, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna have one booth that I'm gonna set up donation. Then I'm gonna set up one prize.
Okay. Wrong, I was gonna bring her an attack stuff.
I'm gonna switch over here.
Yeah.
So I can see both.
No, we, we can come help, you know, Saturday.
When I talk to Anita. Anita.
That works at.
Bronson's wife.
Right.
Credit.
What's this? That's how we have.
New car keys. Car keys are like, I couldn't, I couldn't ever bring out a full blank. Uh, my call to her, the vendors that they're setting up or are like buying in, I think it's going by all the tables, something like that. I think they have eleven, like eleven vendors already. But then we're gonna have booths for like.
How much space are they?
I don't know. I don't know the details.
I gotta fill up that hole.
Right.
No, I think you just have a table.
I think so too. And, you know, like, we're gonna have some yard sales up there. And I talked to there about it and he's like, yeah, bring on, he is, you know, so, and like, like he was talking about something to my table. I probably just gonna donate to rescue, like rescue. He's gonna have some things that he donates to, you know. I don't, that's just one of those things, the more people that are there, the more people's gonna donate. So I don't see why.
You need probably. Sign up tomorrow.
Yeah.
So the paper, we never do, so we put the sign up tomorrow.
For me, he's down. I'm just gonna bring them, all of that instrument, play it work.
It might be.
But, you know, we're just gonna bring them on Saturday. So I said, uh, I just noticed when I was looking at the rest.
Oh, you're trying to.
That's right.
I got, they only got, but. There's enough. I don't know how much space, but there would be enough in there for.
I suppose.
Three, four, five acres.
Yeah.
To have, and they had one like an eight, eight by eight center.
Yeah. I think.
They were pretty good, but not sure.
I have.
And what I was gonna do, I was gonna say, it's not everything else, I would just do a few things. Like I was gonna get her business, Dawn's business call, cards and ask the. And tell to her, then I'll look at something else. You know, that you will be on there.
Yeah, there you go.
You know, like get her business down there too, so.
Yeah, that would be, that was very good.
I would say. But they've only got eleven, they only got eleven.
Yeah.
That won't take up much space at all.
Yeah.
I mean, so if you got, we got. So. I'm worried about. It's a hurry.
There you go. What happened? How's the other guy?
Oh. That man. Who the other guy?
I read some. Right. I like. Need the drive.
Correct.
Figure eight.
I'm a little too smart.
I'm sorry, man.
Man, it's weird.
Yeah, I, I don't.
It ain't hard on the day.
The only test. The only. Fight, fight. Oh, then you're getting.
Right.
I'll show you where.
That's not my bad. This is real.
Wow.
I got another. Five was supposed to go before. I said, I don't know, I think really. I'll be back to. Let's, nobody believe this concussion.
That's, yeah, that's the war case area, right?
It really was.
Yeah.
Charlie's amazing. I mean, five year old kid sees his grandpa.
Right.
What's he doing? Get your mail. Off he goes. She was at the hospital, not the hospital, but.
Don't we want Friday?
But she had a car. And about half an hour.
What's exactly?
Picture a little.
Are you still laying on?
Oh, no, no, I had, I did get myself in the house. Oh. Wow. He's sitting here for the concert, get a scan, make sure you're in a brain. Push your shoulder. Thanks for. What's your heart? Okay, John Scott. Yeah, they're better. I messed up my speaker. So it's just a trick. But what happened is everything went from there.
Oh, no, we're home now.
No, we're. That's what they have to do in the hospital. Where you were. That's what I said, we don't like it. And thank you.
I'm like. Have a great. Use your helmet so.
We're taking, taking away.
Hot, cold, and a black. I don't wear two or three. I had a. I'm correct. I'm gonna be. Look, I made up my mind. Why? Why?
I'm. Yeah.
You know. I don't know. I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah. Nice. You can. You're wrong. See. Your dogs. Guys, I'm gonna just. I don't have any pardon. Uh. Yeah, we're like, well. They all.
I don't want that.
I don't know. It's a great idea. But this, that's a great idea. Awesome place. Yeah. Let me get.
Um. I don't know. Missed this name. I'm like. Yeah.
I mean.
That's not wrong. You brought us in a very big. I'm there, I'm making sure that the. Another big. You're saying. You care. Well, that's. Very. That's a big difference.
I just think. All right.
Well, that's all.
Yeah. This could still have a lot.
There's one.
He's on the other side.
Too.
So now the offer. So. For feeling. For. Was it finally? What it came to great. It's gonna be. Very. Yeah. Thank you.
They got.
So. Probably. Probably mine.
I can, I can control my.
Oh, yeah.
We're close anyway. I can, I can control my.
Oh, yeah.
We're close anyway. He's looking towards. Yeah, we do. But not. The problem. He has a long. He all the love. Plus, if he comes to, like, where he finished with us, he's been with us several times. And. And he gets. Has the illusion that he can do it on the zoom. And just once. And you can stop him. It's a false illusion. Right. And then it just slowly falls apart. I know this.
Yeah, I give the better. I said, here, my question's. I said, Charlie.
All right, you're close on.
I'm ready. Sit here. Sit down.
Chair. Move. Come in here.
My life.
Thanks. I had to replace my place though, you know, it's like you leave a ring and that comes back.
You gonna say anything?
That was cool. Yeah, it's hot. Why they should send you.
That was.
Sorry. Yeah.
Everybody.
Ladies and gentlemen, United States of America, and to be repented for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. For we are meeting today to conduct matters of, of business, got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your wisdom upon our activity so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. In your name, amen.
I apologize, everybody. If y'all have cocaine, it's okay. We just expect you naturally. You're all ready. She's ready. Ready for minutes. I'm ready. I, I. I guess that's, as long as he said that the word means or something like that. I got the grammar. Anybody have some information?
Oh, yeah, I have some information to add at the end of this general discussion about city ordinances.
Add what?
Just general discussion about few city ordinances.
You have a question? Anything, general.
A minute, a minute. Um, I'm trying to read the minutes. Okay. To add what?
Um, I think this evening, this general discussion for city ordinances.
Come on, just start again, am I gonna get a question then? One minute.
Good to.
All second. Huh?
Oh, yeah. You didn't hear my head right?
Yes. All right. That's part of it. Say it, do it. Say it, Mark it.
Or who?
Well, first of all, I guess welcome all the council members, uh, report work on the kid. Been on the service a couple of years anyway, but, uh, still the same on the floor with new bases and new suggestions, whatever it takes. Um, just to give you a little explanation of the, the council reports. Um, it's pretty self explanatory, but over to the right side, something a lot of times be good place and on fuel card. Um, the way this, the way we build the county is a hundred fifty dollars per truck. Uh, twenty dollars per unit and seventy five dollars per, per fuel per run. It's not every truck. So if you see where it says yes, it's where they just charge seventy five dollars. Is that the number of trucks, I think. The FR stands for flag rating. What that is, is if we, like the second run, for example, by some of the new area highway sixty nine, there's nobody to bill for that. We just went out besting it and so it's a county run. So what we use, we charge county flag rating two hundred dollars, that may be a different entire response to that. That's all. So, um, the one there that says human aid. On run number eleven, what that was is we were, we responded to a control burn, it was within a hundred foot of the water area. Um, I guess attached, I thought that you get out of control. We checked it out because the subject did call in. When I looked at it, it's not nobody's fault, so. So that's kind of the explanation. You'll see most of that, I don't see very many NAs. I don't do that very often, but I'm gonna chart somebody, it's not, it's not committed, they did call. And then down at the bottom, there's a total for the city, the found runs. Uh, each way runs is like, we'll give it a look in assistance. That's in city of all area found. The county each way is, uh, looking systems and that. So, and then there is the bottom is what the dollar figure shows. So first, just, I mean, what I usually do, that's just kind of the two of them, like I said, it's pretty self explanatory. Mainly because you got a city bound, I'll study and get four runs of the city bound through the month. Total thirty two responses for that. We had one each way call, was looking at systems on the flat. Through the total of the month, we had three hundred twenty two responses total. That's, and then the average out of about an hour, eleven people per run. That's about thirty runs. So considering it's a volunteer fire department, that, that's very impressive. Uh, I'm not just saying that it's hard to use a department, it's hardly a volunteer. Now, it's. Two or three weeks ago. I said, put the most people on, one time I heard from him, we put seventy people on a fire department. So right now on the roster, that's very. That's extremely well for volunteer fire department, so. If you see any details out about, if you know who do more, I'm sure they appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, so it's pretty much anything to do with the, the council reports. I usually just turn these in, I send it to, uh, Susan. After I get done at the end of the month, and she. Just use it out. So that's all I got as far as regards to the court requests and requests. Concerned. Okay, one thing that I wanted to bring up tonight, um, we got a, have you guys seen this brush truck? It's a white pickup truck that sits outside of carhouse. That's used mainly for brush fires. You want to build sides into wooded areas, so on and so forth, we'll put out brush fires. We also have a truck down at Butler. This is a nineteen eighty six Chevrolet truck down at Butler. I think it's a eighty seven or eighty eight GMC. And it's got that utility bed, sort of like toolboxes on the sides. And it's got a three hundred gallon tank of water. It's got a pump on the back of it. It's only three quarters on a truck. This truck is, is seen as better days. Um, the, it actually, it's got two fuel tanks on it. One of them is leaking. So obviously they won't take it over this, out of the fire. Um, another issue that we had with this truck is it's four wheel drives, it slips in and out. They're trying to drive it, you know, off the road. So I, I, it's beginning to be a safety issue. Uh, I don't want these guys, they can strike off the road and possibly get hurt, you know, because of the four grabs and out of it. Because I really, I mean, you can't tell it from the shape and condition. The fact that it's carried this much weight and it's not really heavy enough truck to carry that much weight. Like I said, this truck, this, this, as I can remember, it's probably been on that fire department for at least. I've been on fire department for, uh, cheaper than sixteen years, so it's probably been used for twenty years. With that truck in the service. So with, uh, Darren, Assistant Chief, he didn't look at the numbers. And he found one for fifteen thousand dollars. And I talked to the mayor here, uh, I talked to Mayor Butler, and I talked to, uh, Judge Detective in regards to person of this. In the meantime, the Judge Detective went looking and he found another one. And it's a whole lot less money, it's only five thousand dollars. Um, it's a four door cab truck versus a two door that Darren had. Um, I don't know what year it is, it's a ton and a half. We, so we call water a whole lot better, we waste a lot of waters, it'll be a lot safer, it's gonna take them off the road. So my intention to ours, if I can get, if we can purchase this truck, um, I will take that truck to Butler. So take it out of service, whatever the case is, whatever Butler wants to do. And then take this truck that I've got and sta- station it down in the Butler fire station, two, number two. Um, reason being, obviously we don't have as many tire response to Butler. And then two, we don't have as much brush fires, fires on the other, in Butler area, that's what we have in found area. So I would station this, this Humvee at station one and use it out of that station. So my question to you all is, if I talk to the mayor, Butler, each of us see what we can do as far as helping the purchase. The Judge Detective talked to the tonight in regards to person. And I would, I would like to have your all permission to, to do another third of this. I mean, like I said, this, this is, it's mainly a safety issue more so than it is the truck issue. Because if I don't get this truck, I'm still gonna have to get the truck out of service. And that means that this truck's gonna have more wear and tear on it. The one, because if we do have a truck, brush fire, I've got a truck, I'm gonna show, notice that the truck, it's simple, keep it inside of firehouse. It's a Ford F five two. We just bought it forty years ago, thirty thousand dollars, it's got a pump, the skid plate in the back of it, it's got a water tank and a pump. I'm not, I don't, I'm not gonna take that truck off the road. I need to. Room one, I don't wanna turn up. You know, just sometimes, you know, you get in hairy situations, you think, well, I can do this, and then it doesn't get it. So if that truck will not go off the road, I'm gonna do. The Hummer, I don't, I don't expect it to be, not have trees on it, so I don't give it that. If you see the doors of this truck down here, they were locked that long off. That's why there's a lot about that truck, because it's already used and, and you know, so. So I really take it and we'll get some denting. I don't know if you're all familiar with the old red truck that we used to have, that was a forster business truck. Those forster business trucks, we'd say we'll get them, but they always had to keep them for a while. So we always had it, it was always a mechanical, two forsters just on the truck. And we, we wanted to. But again, this Humvee won't be treated like that, I mean, obviously it's a lot better, you're starting to correct, more feasible to do that kind of work, so. You know, like I said, I, I really appreciate your all's approval on this to go along with the city council of Butler and the physical persons.
I'm as supportive. It's a good idea if you actually need some capacity.
I was thinking.
One third of five thousand?
Five thousand dollars.
One third of that?
Well, I'll tell you what I asked the county, what I asked the board, or what I asked Judge Detective. This is gonna be used in the county more than this is gonna be used in the other city. Brush truck, we don't have any brush fires in city town. But there will be times that it will come and play for the cities, because like bad weather, snow, ice, this thing will go. Whereas some other trucks, I, I would go take my truck. One year we had a lot of snow and ice. I drove that truck all the way out on the Morgan High Tower, for a walk up there. Just nobody had said that we got vehicles. So that Humvee can come and play for something like that, even here since six months. And Dr. Ditterman, another club, that will come and play for this stuff like that as well.
All right. So how much did you ask the county?
Well, I, I'm sorry.
Loss of.
What I, what I asked them is if they would take half of it. And then I will split the other half to city, so that will save people in twelve years. Because I can get only about that.
And are you good on uniforms too? Or you have no.
I'm talking, you're talking a year.
Yeah.
I, I, I've got five sets of orders. They're supposed to begin sometime in March. But then I talked to Lon about, already started this year, to get five more sets. About eight years ago. Presumably. I got twenty seven cents a year. Year three. Um, the year before that, I had first ten cents. That money that we paid for those ten cents, we get reversed for three. So the year's only, the life of a year is only ten years. So my, my plan is, I talked to Lon about this last year, my plan is to re. To refurbish five cents per year. And I actually talked to the mayor of Butler, and he's actually offered to also put his.
Yeah. Yeah. He said, he said, they will help up whatever we need.
And I just, I'm talking to one of the other departments today. They claim that he works at twenty, he's on for the fire department, he's asking me, I paid for beer, we just, I bought it. And so I just had to look at the, the five cents that I bought, the seven one hundred dollars. They paid twenty two hundred dollars to sell. Not the hours they did, if I'm wrong. But, yeah, it's different from here, from basic.
So what you have on, on the way right now, is seventy one hundred dollars?
Seventy one hundred dollars worth.
That's already been paid for or it's not paid for?
We have.
So that is reflecting about it right now, what we got from that?
If it's not been enforced, that's not, this will reform. We, it's been paid. As soon as.
This is.
I thought it was.
It's already been done? I do not believe that they do. Cause he has. No, no, I think, I thought she didn't have it.
I know, I know she's got, I know she's got her purse.
Right. Well, I mean, you spent seven thousand six hundred forty four in uniform, so would that be included?
Probably, seventy one hundred and five. I don't know, I'm saying. I don't know what else I was gonna.
So that's, so that's seven three hundred. Are we going to get more?
Are we going to get more uniforms before this budget is out?
Well, that's what you want to tell me, I've got seven-one-hundred dollars in the envelope. Because like I said, the plan is to start with places, five cents per year. And then keep in mind, some gear's not going to wear out. Just you guys, and Dan, he may not get into interior firefighting, whereas you might get into interior. So his gear's not going to wear as fast as yours does. So, you know, it's just that one guy.
What happened to the general insurance and plan that they gave up?
It's not went up. When we were breaking everything down to make it work better, we forgot the general insurance for the fire department, I think is what it was. So that's threw off the numbers when we were trying to make them across the board better, so it went off. But it's not anything that's additional, that's what we had before, but when they got broke apart, it's there. So, um, they did honor safety grants. Where you used to get seventy-five-hundred? We haven't got that since two thousand and thirteen, this has just been brought to my attention in the office. And, yeah, the safety fire grants is eligible to your fire department, apparently. You get seventy-five-hundred dollars a year if you submit your fire runs to the state.
Is that the, uh...
We've not gotten that since two thousand and... Uh, it's part of the, probably state aid money, it's not really grant money for you. And we've not gotten that since thirteen, but this is money that can be used for your uniforms and things like that.
You know, we got mailed the, the form.
I haven't got mailed anything until I just, this was just brought to our attention, and Susan's been looking at it, but apparently you have to submit all your fire runs to them and let them know what you're willing to pay for them.
That's the number, so, yes.
Also five-hundred dollars extra to the way to pay for the...
Yeah, and they just say that, just now raised that question. We're trying to evaluate this now. So we want to start doing this, but we can't, I mean, it's for you. I mean, you guys, if that's, uh, if you can help, and you're the fire...
The state aid money comes, I mean, I usually should get period. They used to give the, I mean, when I first started being chief, it came to us. Then it just started coming to the city. And you fill out that paper, it's like a group purchase thing?
No, this is nothing more than that. This is something where you have to submit your details on your fire runs to them. Susan tried to do it today to catch it up, there's information that we don't know.
But on that, it's the paid fire departments, there's a big difference.
They were here, and they were telling us it's us, we missed out. But you got it before, the last time we got it was two thousand and thirteen.
I have different forms of what you're filling out. And then we get changed, we get together.
Get together and get that...
But we're trying to log information together, so we can...
They can use in your department.
So you only have, so they have a form, they have two page forms that you have to fill out in order to get some of this stuff. And then they have one page form, like I have right now, so we're looking over and trying to get the money, but we didn't get it.
So Susan says she couldn't do it without...
You don't have anything to say to anybody like, so that's for the purchase, like it used to come to me, and I always just turned it to the period.
It's a little bit more than for the purchase, because Susan tried to do it, and she couldn't, because it's information on your fire runs and stuff. And it's more information than you already give her. She says she did have everything on her, but she could do it. So, but we'll, when she's back, we'll get with you on that, if you want us, I'd like to see that.
And also, they have another thing, they give away a billion dollars. And what happens is, I think it's over two years, and they split it between two fire departments. And I think he says like fifteen questions. And I said, "I don't know anything about it."
I'm not going to ever get that one, but we can...
Nine years ago, that green fire, which gets great, it builds fires. Pretty active, because it's a blowout, and you have, you have to have a blue wrist.
But we're trying to get it clean together, so we can figure out what we can do, so we get uniforms, you get all kinds of stuff. That's with your best of poses, that's with flatters, your mask, your headings in the back, everything else. Anything and everything that you have to call it.
Safety fire grants. I think they didn't refer to it as a grant at this one, I don't think it's actually a grant.
One is a seventy-five-hundred dollars.
They just wanted to let it out, actually. Yeah, our safety grants are different. This is something that just, they offer a party for, apparently.
Yep.
And we want to get back into that. There was one on two thousand and thirteen, we want to bring it back.
Does a man put fire one, I guess, kind of like fire drop up here?
It comes here, we put it in this milk pot.
Again, just to clarify, so five sets are on their way, right? Seventy-one-hundred dollars, and that's what you want to renew every year, is five sets every year? So we have a budget for uniforms and accessories of fifteen hundred dollars right now, or fifteen thousand dollars right now. We're assuming that that amount came out of that, which, well, like a confirmation that it actually came out. Before we approve anything, but assuming that those five sets have already been purchased this year, that would still leave you with seventy-six-hundred dollars in the budget for uniforms and accessories. Are there any other items besides uniforms that you would look to come out of that fine item, or out of accessories?
One thing that I talked a lot about, this is about the CSX one, is uniform shirts and some new T-shirts for the guys. I mean, because this, we've got association, firefighter associations, so it was everything in city town. But we just bought these shirts, actually, it was two-hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That we took out of our money, that we, that we, we've had and purchased these shirts. I use this money for like, buying soft drinks, or if we have something I like about it, to buy some food or whatever. It's kind of like our, we call it social, essentially. But it's, it's not affiliated with the city, so it's... But that would be my own thing to be, for your department, for your accessories, because I do have new guys on the fire department. And I do have, we have, if we have something for them, I like certain guys that would be dressed for recreation. We have shirts, and it's usually all this uniform shirt badge.
Okay, well, we can't clarify that the five uniforms that we've already ordered have been paid for, right? Is that what we have?
It has been ordered a while ago, I would assume.
Actually, they were ordered a while.
Of last year?
Yes.
So then we have money in the uniform fund?
No, that's...
So you guess that's already, they came in, you have it, they've not came in yet?
And what it is, the company has ordered from their backlog, and they're just sort of... I was just hoping last week that you're supposed to be the...
So we probably, if they've not shipped them, we've probably not received a bill for them, so that's probably not... And actually, I'm not, the fact is, I remember asking about that the other day, and Susan did look it up, and it is, it's been five sets of uniforms paid. Okay, but, and that is you not getting them?
I just talked to her a while back, uh, she...
So they just paid for them, not the rights, like, you just roll back?
I did have a wrap, and it was, it was eight...
Capital outlay, is that going to be in the, but we could potentially use this and... To fund the...
Yes, which line I, that, that would be... I mean, how soon are you looking to purchase this, I guess?
At the time, it came a lot late.
They just made the field, and then those you all approved it.
We're approving a half of a third of five thousand dollars.
A quarter, a half, a fourth, a half.
Half of, half of a half, okay. Of five thousand dollars, you have the vehicle check out?
Well, it's like, the same worst case scenario, the Butler can't tell that. So that would put you guys, I'm wondering, just a quarter. At worst case scenario. What I asked great tonight was if he could put in a pack, but they don't have to, you all, personally.
One more thing, now.
Please?
One more, the city of Butler, now.
Uh, I might get an answer tomorrow, or maybe, I don't know that. I heard he, I don't know if he'll have to, he may have to talk to his council, but I don't know that. But, you know, I've got any thoughts or something. I was going to get an answer from you guys, and I don't know if it's sort of understood. As soon as I, as soon as we... Yeah, we'll say here, now, will we use the Butler? Will we use all of it, count?
Just like fireworks, right?
Yes, but will we station it now? Because that's where most of the runs are in around, and that's what makes it...
I don't need anything.
I'm scared we're going to want to make a motion.
Let's do that. I mean, I don't need to do anything. You can just do a motion just to state that you all want to do, I mean, you don't have to, because it's in the budget to spend. Just wanted to bring him in here and...
And with that, I guess.
And that would come out of capital outlay, correct? Because it's a plan for, so...
That's what I'm looking at here.
I would like the confirmation of the, the, once the bill on the payday invoice for...
I, I remember looking at it the other day, but it could have been, you ordered five sets before, it could have been either four that we were looking at, July. So you had to back up, because this said, what did it say, paints and five sets or something? You said five sets...
The only, the only thing I'm worried about is still the wire. You only got a hundred, I think, a hundred and twenty dollars available for repair maintenance if one of the trucks is on its own. Keep some money for...
How much?
A hundred and twenty dollars.
You can log an electric truck, if you're...
So, and...
In what?
Repair maintenance. So I'm going to make sure that...
Well, now, that's repair maintenance is other stuff than just trucks. That's, um, like, computers and all that stuff is for repair maintenance. So I, I mean, that's not just trucks. Yeah.
Do y'all get new gears?
Yeah, they got computers. So I mean, I have to, if you wanted to see what all that was, I'd have been, I would say it's just trucks. It was all covered there.
Turn your heat on, we don't have time to wait. Fire, fire, put that fire.
You could condition your motion upon that the contingent of, contingent upon taking, because gear is under the paint.
Yeah, I'm kind of around going, I want to make sure that's been paid for, or to bring it over.
In order to prove the uniforms, or, or, sorry, did it really hit, or is the truck? Okay.
So I would make a motion to approve the...
I, I, I'm sorry, I have a quick question. With the county and the city of Butler and the city of Fallon all pitching in to purchase this, does that mean it will still be solely the property of the city of Fallon? Or do we have to say no, that can revert back to the county as well?
That's something I talked today about, that I wanted it solely done by the city. That way we can choose to pay it, or whatever we want to do, so we have the full authority to, other than we ask for permission. We can do anything.
And does he agree with that?
He said yes. Now, I think he, well, I think he's supposed to find out from the person who purchased it. Because we don't want to fall into the same place as what we get used to have to do with the police condition, or what the city's going to, if they don't pay it back. We wanted to work, we sold it on the main, city, right?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-fourth, as of right now, one-fourth amount of payment for the truck, contingent upon, one, are the uniforms paid for already? Has it already reflected in this budget? And two, can we get a written agreement with Butler, city, Fallon, and the county outlining who's paying what, and where the ownership lies?
Ownership lies, city, right?
We can just get that printed.
I mean, I guess. I mean, yes. I think my guess is something that, you're checking on uniforms and accessories for this?
Not for the truck, because that's a large chunk of the budget, but right now, we don't know if it's there.
Just want to know on that.
Before I approve something for a purpose out of this, they all want to know the line, the bottom line on this budget would be correct.
Yeah, because if that, that seventy-one-hundred hasn't been paid for, then that takes away that whole available fund.
Yeah.
And there won't be, and there won't be any money to turn heat on, I'm sorry. We'll have to send the whole. Because you will have five uniforms.
Turn it back.
And a new truck. So turn your heater on with a new truck. Did I also hear you requesting shirts for the guys, or not?
Well, it's, like I said, I talked to her about this here, if we can, if you see us, that's, uh, like, first. I mean, the T-shirts, I mean, years ago, when Gene was chief, or when Gene was mayor, we had a couple of shirts, when Gene was in office. I think when he reappeared, we got, we bought T-shirts. But these, and then, a lot of these guys, those aren't about, usually I have towards the fire department, the city buys T-shirts for them. Wondering about that, if you want to purchase more, then obviously they pay for it, so. But for me, somebody's got, they, they don't have T-shirts, so.
Did we buy white shirts also, when we were discussing it? Leather shirts?
Well, yeah, we did buy, a few, we did buy some shirts, two years ago. But those are uniform shirts, it's not every shirt. But like I said, I've had new guys on the fire department, and you know, some people split, I've got new gear, uniforms, shirts back. But somebody, like my dad, is on for twenty-three some years. Tom Lucius is on for twenty-five years, very grandly.
Sure. Well, my thing, my, you know, my thing about when he's asking there, I love the volunteers, I mean, a lot of these guys, they like that stuff. You know, they don't get paid. You know, I know the guys are in charge of taking care of the budget and everything, but they love their shirts. They volunteer, they pay away to their home at two o'clock in the morning when they go to their...
They have a lot, they give them to you, so, you know, when I'm driving, they have to, they do give them a lot.
They keep the trust.
So, there's a lot of things.
And no matter your insurance, it's scattered off, it's just with that one.
Just to give you anything, the accident that we had out here, Rachel Hill, Saturday afternoon, attendance, so forth. The scene was clear, and then, we were out there for you. So if I have any questions, so I can tell this court that you all are going to be... I'd like to see if I have any questions as far as the court's...
Fixer Upper?
I appreciate your assistance and support in the purchase of the truck. If you have any questions, the ones I'm going to do, I've given my business card, it's got my cell phone number on it, it's got my email address. Don't hesitate to call me or DM me, if you need something. If I don't answer the phone, if you want, you'll have to, you'll have to call it back. You'll have to turn my calls. That's it on that. Well, thank you.
I have a report there, and I'm pretty satisfied to run a few days. Question, uh, update on meeting with, uh, one of the Senator Livingston, he's called, and I'm out with him. Uh, discuss a few things of how to proceed with, uh, taking care of issues that we have with the Senate. We're still going through that, and, uh... You have, you have a piece for the Senate, their organization's actually over the Trump House, we have papers pertaining to health, emergency, education. And also Heathering, will be hosting, uh, Hilton County Church Rest Use Garden Sale, February eighteenth, Stone Garden. All proceeds will be going toward church rest use organization. And on March the second, uh, in Miami, we'll be presenting a community-wide Mount Arapahara Emergency Education seminar. Going to be hosted by the University of Living Center. This will be a free event, it's all in the public, six hundred miles, Stone Garden. And that will include, uh, patient... And that will include a patient mental health awareness, and include a presentation from Natalie Selby. She's direct, the director of, 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 mentioned training, the Department of Police Department. And, uh, they're inviting everybody to attend, to attend.
Hey, when I came into the office today, we were talking about your young man, how nice he was from the accident, that happened a couple of weeks ago. Said he was very nice and very caring to his children.
Appreciate that.
So, you felt Chris, great job?
Appreciate that.
I would like to, um, motion to, that when the guys go to training, that they take a cruiser instead of their own vehicle. Uh, insurance, uh, if they was to wreck it. I think would be SOL, if they wrecked their own vehicle, um, going to training.
Can you state, can you state, can he state from Richmond, does he?
Yeah, I'm talking, I'm not, I'm talking, like, I'm just talking about, like, uh, any kind of training. When they, you know, the officers, they're, they take, uh, cruisers, not, uh.
Well, the reason why they haven't been taken is because they've been wrecked a day or, in, at that moment in time, he didn't have enough for anybody. Yeah, so that's why they had to take them to the train.
I think the risk if they was to wreck their own vehicle, the power plate. Ten pounds of horses, they wrecked on the bars, just a bit, because they're more liable for theirs, and, you know. Correct? This is up there?
Oh, I don't think, I don't think, neither the city's insurance is still gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that motion is consistent with what most police departments do, when they have to, I mean, the mayor's, they have to, look at the chief to make sure it's one available, one available.
It's all through the streets, it's going on with the.
We have two that are down, one is, uh, with the. Yep, and we're still working on the one that's been wrecked.
Are we looking at the violent vehicles, or? Is that an optional, are violent vehicles going to be purchasing vehicles?
Thank you for the motion. We might want to second it, I should, I should address very carefully. Can you restate the motion to?
So, when the officers go to trainings, uh, do they take a cruiser?
Would you accept a friendly note, if available?
If available.
You say you saw a light down?
One was wrecked. They had to have three, uh, bins, we got the bins in, we're still waiting for KLC to tell us if we can fix it.
Where are you going to?
KLC, just KLC to come back to us. So we need to take, I said Smith, Esmond, since they get back those things. A little slow, because they were involved. With the investigation of the car, we interrupted the vehicles, that's why we were so late. Anything else for Greg?
Uh, one question I thought, I forgot, there was an incident a couple of weeks ago, kind of a gentleman down here on Main, on Shelby Street, that was, um, kind of affecting some businesses. He was living in a household that's abandoned, just a couple of homes away, has he been, is that a situation to take care of?
Yes, actually. I think, uh, Mr. Colberson, Mr. Paul, ladies and gentlemen, came down to transport that dumb man to the western.
Was he, was he a nation?
He was, no, he was, he was just a guy that was out here. I think he had anything with them for, I think he was old four or something, but it's been a while. They came to transport him.
Oh, you checked, the business owner asked him about it?
Yeah, we took him to the auto center, the western, they have social workers there, so they could assist him in getting back to kind of where it used to be.
What, how about?
Where's the money now, where's the money to pay that?
That's ABC, right?
That's where my, uh, the.
So the cruiser's. So that's on a separate, ABC, hardly, so sixteen thousand, I'm sorry. It's like it's on front, LGA and all that, it's on front. Not general front, it's on front.
Yeah, but I was wanting to see, but how much do they have left of that? The expenses on that.
How much is left in that?
Cause she said they were playing down on the screws, I want to see.
Yeah, that's what she said, do we have a point on that?
I'll have to look it up, leases.
Sixteen nine on car leases.
Yeah, that's what it's in there, so I don't know, I have to pull the leases and see what the.
Nine vehicle, don't have any leases on it, be.
That's what they all feel the two right here. Right, I could pay all, right? Pay off all your money.
And the only other thing that I want to let you all leave in mind, with ABC blood, you can't use all that for a police cruiser. Because a police cruiser is not strictly used for ABC. As I say, you're not supposed to do that, it's divided up across the board. Like, um, it could be a portion of it, not the entire thing. They're always, you use that for that, you're not supposed to. Because it should be, if it's strictly, if that was strictly used for ABC, then you're fine. It's not, but it's for use for everything. So I mean, you can use it for a portion of it, to pay those whole number, or, but it's not.
Any questions for Greg? Thank you, Greg.
Is, excuse me, is, are you the one that would be following up on the, uh, light issues? Are we making, um, uh, tickets, are we following through with the light issues and things of that nature?
Okay, I'm sorry, again, that's later, okay.
Sorry.
Do we have a dog catcher in the city? What is your responsibility when a dog is running at large?
We're to find a dog, contact a local, come and get it.
Then why does my neighbors across the street have three dogs running all the time in my yard? I call, nobody does that, I call, nobody does that. We have got to do something with them, they're attacking through my fence, my dogs.
I love you, but that's, that's one of the.
Because I'm done, I get cussed by that Kevin Keys, every time I walk out my door and say something to his dog. I'm done with them.
What I can tell you, is you have to call, try to locate.
I call up there, and they tell me they gotta get a hold of the dog catcher, and all kinds of silly stuff. And by that time, when the man sees, when Kevin Keys sees me out there, he sets and screams Ripper until that dog comes. It's named as Ripper.
You call their dispatch?
Yeah, and then, when the officer comes, when the officer comes, there's really nothing they can do, because the dog's already back on their property. Because just soon as they hear me yell at it for being on my, it gets in my yard and on my fence, I'm doing everything I'm supposed to be doing. This, this is the dope-headed Dylan house across from my house. I've done my part and bought the houses next door to keep that stuff right from, except for the one across from me. And it's ridiculous, twenty-seven cars stopped there Sunday, twenty-seven.
Who's responding to when you call, make your complaint? Is it them?
The, the, not me, the one, these, every house.
Is it them?
I have stopped calling, to be quite honest with you, I've stopped calling because they've been there. Kenny's been there, and Josh has been there, is Josh still working for you? Okay, Kenny, is he here? Okay, the two young men, I think you all sent Frank Burke or Brady, they've been over there. They rent a car together and come over there, it's just progressively getting worse. And I notice other places in this city that has got the same problem. But this is ridiculous, we can't even get rid of the animals, they're not treated, they run my fence line. I treat my animals extra, because I don't want them to get anything those animals have got. And I'm not trying to focus on you guys, I just know that something needs to be done, because it's escalating. They stand over there, that Kevin Keys will stand over there and call me names with his back to him, so I can't do anything about it. But it's only him and I out there.
The thing I hope to this is the board, because according to our city ordinance, it's a penalty for having any animal outside without a leash on it. Any person who violates any provision of this chapter four, and none of the penalties are not already otherwise provided, shall be guilty of mistreatment here and shall be fined no less than twenty-five hours, and more than two of our per offense, per day. So if you record it, you have evidence, issue citation.
But I, I bet you have made a hundred calls up there.
Well, eventually they'll go broke, so, just keep following issues.
But they don't come and get them. They get the dogs over there, and then, it, it's all overwhelmed. But it's not all bad, I mean, it's, it's the, the, it's ridiculous, twenty-seven Sunday.
We're working on, I mean, we are working on, we really are.
There's at least fifteen people living in that house.
You know, all my, you know, we gotta train people, we gotta, you know, put people out there, you know, get experience and things. We're doing what we can right now, and, it's, it's rough right now, because we, we are a little short, but.
Oh, I know you're short, and I'm not, I'm not trying to focus, I'm not trying to say you're not doing your job, by no means. What I'm saying is, it's progressively getting worse, they all need to know it. Half of the council has not been on city council, they're new, but they need to know the situation, that's why I'm sticking out. I know if I call, you come. But I also know that I have to call, because just soon as that man sees me, he grabs the dog, and they run back in the house, and it's over. When they radio, here's what happens, they have radios in the house, so they can monitor their channel. So when I call, they dispatch, here's what I've done the last time. I called, and I said, it happened to be Angie Wright on the dispatch, I said, Angie, radio the off, or, call the officer, don't radio him, have him come in from Maple Street by Todd Ramsey's house, and they got him. They got him right there, but I mean, that's what you gotta do, I've got to do detective work to get the stuff taken care of.
What's quite alarming, I just called yesterday about two dogs running around the street, they actually have, like, shock collars on them, and, of course, by the time they go describe the dogs, oh, no, they told me to call them, and what else, they didn't click on it.
So I, I was told to pin them up. I own property that I cannot get on if a dog's outside. I own, I've been in these people's land, to where I own the land beside them, across from them, and everything. And then Gary Garner owns the other side, they're in, in, I can't walk on my property between the people in the greenhouse and the hamiltons. I don't know who the people are in the greenhouse. But their dogs, they've got a pit mix, everybody comes over to my yard and uses their bathroom.
People are also.
I was gonna say, I think we were supposed to have that, that was an issue several years ago with the city, because we had that issue also.
Well, it hasn't been but a month ago that I got trapped over there with the dog, and had to yell for the man in the greenhouse to come and call his dog. All to me on my property, because it's not, it's not active, but I'm in it.
Greg, are the, are the dogs, they're related to us, or are they coming when?
They are, a lot of times they're.
The man makes ten or fifteen thousand dollars a year, and works twenty hours a week, he don't make any money. He is open three, three days a week, four hours a day, they're, they're. Does he make a lot, what does he make? Does he? Well, good, that's making work for it. Well, when he started, it was ten or fifteen thousand dollars that he made, but somebody's gonna have to put an effort for it, to push.
I'd like to, I personally, I can take a dollar to the front center, put it in my car and make it loud.
You have got every single time I call three.
And I, I still do that, if I can. Also, David's saying he will come out and we can do this.
Well, that's BS too, I mean, if he's being tricky to do a job, he wants to do it. So my question, can we go to the fiscal board and make this man do the job that he's supposed to do in this city then?
I think that expectation seems clear, long time ago, when we had, when we were in this situation, we paid the county, and the guy, um, the officer at the time, would give us so many hours per week here in the city. He had to go, um, you know, to all the city for so many, you know, had to have so many pickups and everything like that, it was all laid out. And then when the city got their own, uh, that went away, so that's what I was.
That's because the police were the ones, they were actually the ones with the dog catcher, she wouldn't go out. So the police said, babe, you go that far back.
Yeah, uh, another thing too, that a lot of people don't know, is, but the county, uh, dog catcher is where he lives. By the time that he gets in here, everything's, is squared away.
But then he also had an open.
Of course, my. He told me to get the dog out, to come get it, now that he's injured, me, Kevin Keys' dog goes out and get hurt. Now be heard, because I'm not worried, I'm just tired. And Greg, not that I'm going angry, it's that, that I'm not, I know you, you're dog. So, it's not what's usually supposed to be, because this is ridiculous, I walked outside Saturday, and the dog went around my paper like it was gonna.
So.
I mean, I can shoot it, but then I get dropped afar and hard, you see?
Yeah, he's actually not, he's actually not a meat dog, I've picked him up.
It's a nuisance.
You know, he may not, but he doesn't like me, but the point is, it's against the law, I vote for everybody that I know. He, he doesn't like me, the white one doesn't like me, and the one over there doesn't like me, and it's probably because I run off my property every chance I get. And none of those people I shame.
Come on, Greg, and we'll sit down and see what we can do, and we need some contract, different contract, how you can do it, and what all you.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Could you possibly, uh, turn this over to code enforcement board? And have them, have them give the guy a ticket? And make him come in front of the code enforcement board? It's a nuisance to her. You know, and then.
What's happening with that is now we've decided that we're gonna separate the parking citations from the other city ordinances. So what we need to do is get with the, the other ordinance board, not the parking board, but the other board, sit down and decide what are the common ones that we're gonna go after to list on the citation. And get those printed up. And as soon as that happens.
How, how quickly can we do that now?
The parking one is win. It's win to the printers. The sign off line's good, so we should be good once that's announced.
Other than that, there should be a general form that you are in violation of any of your rights. And you go into, you gotta have your ordinance number on there.
But you have to, you just have to notice that you're in violation, but there's no actual citation generating that I can say.
We've got, I've got citations in my office that we use for other cities. We can get that turned around.
I suppose we have the letter comment we used to do. We have the letter comment we used to do. Not a book. I mean, we can still use.
Here, I don't want to mislead you though. Uh, the, the dog ordinance is probably not under the purview of the code enforcement board. Because that's made with property citations.
Well, we can do the dog. I mean, I saw our people with dog mistakes, I think.
Yeah.
David Hartwood said they, um, here, they're in the court. Talk to your.
When I was appointed as, as the dog catcher at the time, I was thinking about doing the tickets. And I got word spinning around about way that they would probably be kicked out of court.
Well, we wanted to get it before we get it before. We're just gonna find them and there isn't a way to find them. That's when you have to go to court. Then the public would be able to find.
And I know, I know for a fact that if you check into it, ultimately, if you put it on a state citation and court just orders the money to the city.
I just missed something. You're talking about the money that you get running. The city gets the money and that.
On like parking citations.
No, the dog, the dog thing. I don't look too much in on the dog stuff. I was gonna say, what happens, okay, let's say my dog's run at large. You cite me once. I pay my twenty-five dollars and get my dog out. You cite me again. How many times do I have to pay twenty-five dollars and get my dog out? Cause I got a lot of money. You know what I mean?
You can raise it. For the first offense, you can do it up to minimum twenty-five. And then it's up to two and fifty. So you start hitting two dollars per day.
There you go. That's what I wanted.
The first offense, twenty-five, second, seventy-five, third, four.
If he would just take his dog and win out of that tickle.
I think the twenty-five is actually just a cinning five. That's not feeding his dog out of dog fat.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to think. I wanna see what all the, what all the.
I don't know what he charges on that. It might be a hundred dollars a day. It could be like going buck.
This is a person I've been here this year. Um, so. In my stated things, I think Donovan's done it for her. And they just run a lot. That's what she's kind of been doing for some time here, but. I guess I'm just here, here to ask any different questions.
While Gary's up there, we can go ahead and say that we did order some water meters and some lids. It was about eighty-two hundred, it was eight thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. And we put in for a safety grant that's a max of three thousand dollars, which you get back one. And we got that back. So we're working on. So we've got a few of his. Next year we plan to do it again. We'll go and do that one.
Absolutely. And also too, Chris is writing grants. Chris is at school, Chris writes grants.
Chris is a track. We got a certificate.
He's a certificate grant artist. So that's one that she took up the show. You want your first grant for what you got? You have a pretty first.
I just wrote for a scholarship.
And then you.
Letters are easy. We'll buy grants. It's, it's a lot more, it's a lot of stuff we gotta do. It takes time. But we do wanna focus on one pretty soon to see if we can get things back on track. I'll come back to you guys and see where you all wanna start. There's a lot out there. Maybe start getting some other. But they, this was with the letter. That was three thousand dollars for a letter.
Some letters you're terrible. I think you had a couple of, maybe they asked me about the call. I don't know if I should go up and do it. I thought for gas, but since then they'll issue me that they, they will look into it. That went about a week ago. I'll be back in another, another few days or so. I'd see what's going on. Actually, there's more than one out there if you start looking at it, so. I kind of thought you would, what would it be, that you know, you might not use it there's checks. And he'll think that's a problem, so.
Uh, who's responsible for our streets meeting?
It'll be us. It's maintenance. I mean, I'm kind of the charge of all the lanes.
Do we have a street feeder?
We've got a little sweeper for a muck cat. Uh, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. Sometimes it's, it's correct. It's no good for curbs. They don't make the chirping. I mean, it's just more like construction, site, street sweeper, sets on the muck cat and the sweeper.
I know usually in the spring, uh, we see the dogs out.
On the sidewalk.
Doing the curbs in the sidewalk, something.
As far as.
Well, I see you all come here with like the, uh, the leaf. How many times did you do that a year?
Uh, we do it one time, just in the fall. Now, we won't pick that dirt like, like with leaves. Cause we end up just a big vacuum cleaner. Just sucks a lot of the dirt right on out through there. So we do that in the fall of the year.
And you do that several weeks. And it's always in the paper.
Probably by the.
I, I was gonna say, we always tend to.
We cut it out and then we keep doing it. And I've seen people right now that's got it on a hammer. And we can't keep going back and that's the max. We ended up going back to the shovel chute.
Also, please help us with trash.
Well, we're on the trash. Uh, we've actually got, you know, so from the thing about is, I don't know if she's reminded anybody here or told anybody, our truck is over ten year old. It's starting to break down. Every year, this year we're talking about eight thousand dollars on it. Things like old seven, market trucks. And her other one is a ninety-eight, an Accu, ninety-eight with rares over the beginning of seven, so. You know, we're not here to talk about money. And that's what we're talking about. Yeah, we're, we're in the trash, we're in those first repairs, we're in tree trees.
Like, you know, I do like walks or clean that kind of stuff up. I mean, because as far as everything maintenance wise, sometimes you'll do a good job. But as far as like the toughness of our streets, you know, that's one.
We do like parks and stuff like that. Really, we don't have any. Right now, about, uh, five, six, six cars. One of them's kind of on his way out. I think he's gonna get really sick and be harmed. So that leaves me with that. So, and you know, right now, tree trees, it takes everybody three. All time to train with them. So it's just a bad. Slow days, there are no slow days. On slow day, yeah, I don't think I'll try it. Probably a crack.
Is there anything that you can do to help you with that?
I, I don't help me other than the money. You know, it's a lot of it. Street sweepers, we have looked at them on some websites, first deal high dollars. You know, and everything you buy, it takes money to keep it in.
Well, we're also still on the trash. We talked about the trash. You can take off the beard. Put it on another.
Talked about a game of chess. We couldn't get over on those game of chess. You know, I think at one time, before she had to go over, we talked about buying money. I think it's kind of weird, so. I don't know. I think we needed something else in this.
Do we have any more tethers?
We have, we just purchased fifty.
A lot of people do not know that we had those to rent down. You know, the tethers, the gray tethers. Uh, people have got. Don't have?
We just got them last month.
Yeah, but thank you for the loans.
Yeah, couldn't run it. Couldn't have anyone. And someone broke, you know, it's got a lot of numbers, so we got some more.
Well, we do have a lot of insurance.
With that, uh, that trash one-on-one board or the, the county pickup where they, uh, they give money to the groups to go around, is that something we can have come into the city?
They used to do that. They probably used to do that. I don't know if we'll steal them anymore. I think we still like to sell them.
Billy still does that, um, with the adopt a highway and they do certain groups still pick up trash. I mean, yeah.
So I mean, something we could do, it's a little money, and probably in the city. And the tourism council talked about it before, it's kind of a, take care of your city day, like some kind of clean, you know, citywide cleanup day in the spring. Where they do different groups and churches, people want, it doesn't fall in store in review, but to take care of some of those spring to summer, um, needs, whether it's weeding, cleaning up, cleaning streets. I mean, that is something I think that we could try to implement in some way. I'm not sure what the structure will look like. It definitely be a partnership of other organizations, but, um, that could be some extra manpower to get them a project to say, go forth and conquer.
And I'm gonna figure that out first. That's great. Yeah, um, the, uh, like the little overpass on Main, um, with the creek. I know the city owns on one side, but I didn't know about the other. And I thought it'd be a good idea if the city, you know, would be, was up to, um, some organization or club to do flowers on each side of that. And that'd take away the homing right there. Um, it's that little overpass.
I think if you look at it, parts would be low to, or, you know, it would be, then again, the sand is right there.
Where the, uh, where the sidewalk is. Yeah, it's right over here. Yeah, about middle school, uh, where, um.
Well, you just have to let me know what you're. That's one, what's on the wrong end, I think, is that they don't do school now. Is it Godman, maybe?
Yes, they have that. Yeah, they own that one little strip there. It goes along with the house. They also.
Some of that, that's over a couple of years, but you know.
Right, and I know that they've done some work there to sort of.
But he was still quit. He was still not holding it in.
Yeah, so, um.
We could try to all learn his wife's and nobody's.
Yeah. Um, I'm not so sure what that entails, but yeah, I, I know they own one side of that.
The left side, we, I guess we did from Rockland.
Do what?
Rockland, you have to see from the left side.
I know we got them.
We purpose this one. That one, that whole, remain all the way down to the fourth street, like a creek.
I don't know, you know, they say like, renovation or something to be or something, but.
The school also.
To do with, uh, champions or free.
Uh, Bridget, well, Bridget's, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think they had justice department. I think all the organizations that got involved with it and champions for Dragic, Hilton County gives a grant and say, here, here's money for tools to be planted in the fall and the come and the spring. That's just one of the, one of the ways you could do it.
And you used to get the people that just had fines that they all threw free.
Does the city have like community service or something like that?
No, that's kind of what that was. We might end up. And it went through, it went through.
They're coming to the dorm.
It used to be, it was crazy.
Well, it's, Greg, Andy does it. I thought it was something about, like, they just take them and get them all the time. They have a partnership dinner. The people went out, right, we get, bring it back. It's great kind of dinner. City, we kind of always get some free. Really good work. I worry on fire evidence, replacing. We've got two put-ins, that's packed over. Uh, we should have one more. We've got one more to stop. I'm sure we did that. I mean, we're a real hard winner, so you're not really gonna have too many lines break over the night. And, and some of them, you know, Donna and I was talking, uh, this is a bad one. There's, you know, she's throwing, maybe there's some money there for a hot like gun. Something about some areas, it's really bad on where, where the sewer and water areas where it could be fixed or could be like fixed first. I don't know if you get that, she just pulled it for me. I mentioned one for vials. They get old vials out, you know, through the year. We do the new vials, but we do the old vials there right hand. So, I mean, if that vial's closed, where are they gonna be in the water? So, and that's kind of my areas. It's like to see a lot of those vials get out, move back to your head. These are the way. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Uh, not really any exceptional, I guess I catch up on some projects. I mean, we've been in the forties for the last, uh, sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen, fifteen. Pump station of Banner Village. It's been, it's a, it wasn't a really good pump station when I was given to us in the seventies and we've, we've tried to patch it together for the last forty years. It's pretty much shot. So we had to replace both the pumps. We still are gonna have to replace the rail system. The pumps traveled in and out of the, out of the well. And we're gonna have to replace like pumps. We replaced it once before. It's probably a hundred years up there too. It's, it's all shot. By now, we're the best pumps that they made back together. They don't. We've been having to have a pump station pumped around. Which means we had to pump the station in the twenty thousand gallon container and pay somebody to haul it to us to dispose of it. It's been bad so much. The E D A said this time we're not gonna bypass, deal with the pump and just have it. Probably don't cost us. Um, it's a, it's a hundred dollar load to haul it and I forget what the amount on the equipment. This one, this one costs a hundred dollars to pump around. Uh, other projects. Uh, I guess we can, uh, forward to get about it. When Chrissy brought up the, uh, rock balls. I was wondering, the, uh, I know a total of few years ago with Griffin. We had a contract with them, twenty-eight thousand dollars, just whether they bring us anything or not. And we haven't liked it for a few years and I didn't know if that was being, all we're thinking, talking about rock balls.
I think the last time we looked in it, did we find that we didn't know we're finding an actual contract with Griffin that was found?
I don't have it, I don't keep it right. I just, I just know that we had. Well, that was three years ago, I think.
I remember you had said that and you were gonna get me a copy from them.
All right, we're gonna get back at you, but I'm, I'm not billing, so.
So I mean, well, I'm not, I mean, Dawn bills, bills that. I mean, so is she still billing whatever you told her was agreement on?
I don't know if Dawn, I don't.
I will get with Dawn and see what she's doing for Griffin's.
Well, I, I just know.
Check on that contract and, and just see if there is one of them. I guess it would be dark for now and all that. Because that is how much got a year to go since they have that pump station.
They also, in that time, they had a contract. They were gonna say three hundred dollar rent for the property type of pump station out there. The burn pump station in down court. They never, they never did get it to the app, so that's huge. Well, I'm fine with that. Well, I'm wondering, I mean, if you look at it. And then, um, Chrissy, we used to get safety grant every year, two, they was matching that, we had, we don't have a lot of it. P L C, it was only about three thousand dollars a year, safety, because of matching, I think. We had, well, it was about a year or so.
That's what this was, was P L C safety grant, I don't know. Was yours for water?
It's a good safety, so it's, it's totally safety.
And that was a matching grant? So, so if they paid three thousand, you had a match.
It did, fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred, uh, two thousand. Like I say, we did, we did it for, I don't know, five or six years or better, and the last four or five years, I think we did it for, I'm sure, money. I guess the mayor asked me done tonight, to talk to you about the East Penn Water. Their experience in the autumn, uh, main breaks between where they can take it up from us, that are matched to be in the front of the water plant, to where their pump station is, about, well, where Brown's though is up, shooting it up. Our normal pressure is about a hundred and twenty pounds in the basement of the water plant. When you turn a pump on and you push water up a grade, you're constantly pushing, 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 when you shut the pump off, that's the way it all come back to you. We have a check out in the basement of the water plant, it catches it and holds it there. We had a problem again years ago, where the piping went up and teed it into the pump pipe, you go out of those pumps, it goes straight up, light, and then teed went out the wall, it was pushing in and leaning it, dragged the pipe. So we had to go in and brace it up, about seventy years ago, the beam. It was, you know, pretty good job, and that's what they stood it, because when it comes back, it comes back for almost three hundred pounds or less. Uh, Wayne has, you know, the thumb, his, uh, his pressure, if you're our pressure, we just want to go to the hundred twenty, that's all we want on these figures. But he's got higher pressures, again, high gauge, it's going over two fifty. So he fills the, that's what's caused, I'm not sure it is caused by our business problems. And Gary, you can help me out here. He put a device on for a couple thousand dollars, that is, uh, it's a blow bomb is what it is, it's a, it's an A N S line, and he puts two in his blow bomb. I don't think he had an engineer, because it wasn't, uh, letting up gas, and he still has the same, he dropped it from the almost two ninety down to the two fifty, but that's still more pressure than you want, circles, you should have. We haven't had a leak on that main for how long, you know?
It's been several years.
But we did have a lot of it ten years ago. But in my mind, the mains laid backwards, the bill's pointing downhill instead of uphill, and it wasn't, it wasn't bending or raveling, it was just open dirt, rocks falling on top of it, somebody was following contract. So I always felt like, the piping laid backwards, the movement would be on that ship, and if you got a rock against it, over years, it just not even rare to place it and crack no pipe. So I always felt like that, that would do things with the thing.
The water district actually, on the other side of the river, they had all the D B C files, now they put it up the arm. From, on the other side of the river now, it's not falling. She calls it the way they made the pond, everything now starts to fall on the other side of the river, which isn't home, uh, next to the road, next to, uh, let's, a little broken, to, to be, it's falling in there for a song. And, and that they, this, if it's, happens there, it's nobody gonna start, if somebody keeps fixing areas in, if they fix their problem, we probably would send it back to us. So it's gonna start being our problem, we need to, or something. It's going back in the, maybe falling out, or something, start off the line.
Do you know what, my, there's something about your pipe, was your, I'm not, maybe if you are, they don't have C nine hundred, but, uh, they do, they do damage. I don't think they do that, but they didn't hold their money cash on, or their arm, or change the road.
So my question to you, Todd, what happened, if they fixed their end, will it start, okay, it's a long one, false one?
It could start blowing the line, it could, it could blow the line, or it could start blowing the back line.
Will we fix it?
No, I don't know. So the dealer just, you mean? Well, this is what the, the district's talking about, when they talk to you, Mayor, about, they could put another device on for about fifteen thousand dollars, it's a different valve system that shuts slow and is still as shut as they can. Or, they're suggesting, that's, I'm, I'm back up, that's what it costs them about fifteen thousand dollars. That it will be on the other side of us, where we wouldn't be getting any of that. Now, for thirty thousand dollars, we could put soft starters, or, it's really on soft starts, we already have soft starts, it's a, I'll look at the drive, it's a variable speed drive. And where it will affect, when motors come on, it comes slow, faster, and when they go down, they go down, so it could do the same thing, but about fifteen dollars, about thirty thousand dollars for that, like, on a quick. They would split it, if we want to do that, and we both have protection. In my mind, two hundred and fifty pounds is gonna be two hundred and fifty pounds whatever it is, we're hitting now just the same, and it's not gonna increase, when they don't get it. That's my opinion. Pressure won't change. Now, Gary, I think saying, thinking the brake won't change. Their pipe might be weaker tomorrow, I don't know about that. I do know we had a different pipe, we have duck alarm, which you're not under, during big valves. And we have C nine hundred, which is the heaviest water valve you can use, they don't have C nine hundred for that. I don't, that's not, not false, it might come in or monitor, and all. So, do we want to go in with them and spend fifteen thousand for H R policy, or? I asked Wayne, if he would want to come next month, he wasn't making any money. If he wanted to come next month and talk to you about it, he said he could possibly do that, and maybe bring the breadth engineer, those, off my Sunday devices.
I would like to set up a meeting with him and the council and talk about rates.
We talk about money, not getting it. No, that'd be a thing.
On the business side, we're seeing that never changed the rates in ten, fifteen years.
Well, I want to get you on P F C, they're regulated by P F C, so therefore we are able to with them. And if we are, have more than fifteen percent water loss, you're not gonna get a penny, that's just the way it is.
And then that's why I always complain about the water loss, I mean, you gotta, you know, get.
And that's one, right, that's one, I think, you have to be, something, you can't be showing loss like you used to be in sewer, the ultimate, or anything.
But, if I remember correctly, that was only a water loss up to them, you know, the water loss to them. Because it couldn't, it couldn't cover the whole area, because it didn't change that.
So it could be their loss, it could just be our loss, only, but we don't.
But only in that direction, and that's where they got us last time, in our paperwork and about, you know, separating employees, um, who is getting paid where. Which they've all, that, that's all improved up there at City Hall, but our water loss was to them is what was, I think, was a lot of the issue too. Um, because they kept saying, well, you have, you started lost on, on this, so I think, you know, but, um, the whole deal on that was, um, Jean raised the rates, that we had to come back out, and we lost a lot of money, uh, a lot over that, and you had settled on a, a certain rate, that was ten years ago.
It's really hard to raise, uh, districts, if you, if you sell wholesale, it's right, it's hard to raise your wholesale customers without raising your retail unless you can show by, I'm sure Mr. Duncan. If you can show them through rates, and how, how much it costs to get it to that person, or here's how much it costs to get those residents or your residential customers, and you, you'll be able to.
Most of them, yeah, and we've raised the rates on the customers.
Yeah, as long as you do P F C, it'll probably help you do something.
But, I mean, the problem is, is that needs to be fixed, but we don't have the money.
Sorry, the water loss, we did the, we did that, uh.
It's nothing, what we sell water to them. And they're making, um.
To clarify, you're suggesting that you work with East Pendleton County Water to fix the issue that is occurring on Schumaker Hill?
I think, I'd like to listen to more, I'd like to listen to more, yeah.
But it's just fixing the problem, not becoming one coalition.
Right, just fixing it, yeah.
Yeah, it's, either way, it will fix it, uh, one will fix it for them, if they just buy the valve for fifteen thousand, install it, it will fix it for them, it wouldn't fix it for us. We, so we get to do a fix that, but we've been getting it for since nineteen ninety-two, I know, so. And it did, it leaned the pipe, and it caused us seven thousand dollars of damage, we had to deal with it several years ago.
So my question to you is, is it a good idea or not?
Well, I would like to ask an engineer, but, but, there's a lot, there's a lot to calculate in, uh, that maybe I would miss, and it's not what I do.
Where are our options, Eric?
Where are our options? Well, for instance, like Gary said, the duck alarm is rated for three hundred and fifty P S I, so two hundred and fifty shouldn't bother us whatsoever. And the C nine hundred's rated for, you know, it's at least two fifty. They don't have C nine hundred over there to track them, like, on bus, I don't know about their pocket, I don't know, and I'm not distribution like Gary either. If it's me, I don't, I don't like it, and that's me. The vibes, yeah, I like, you ought to listen to it, and you're all option one.
Yeah, can you do some research on some of that, Tom? Is that, or, you know, Todd, I want to, on some of that, that should be all. I think there's probably some other products or something, something that, or something, product, something, um.
That's, uh, well, there's bladder tanks, there's a big like, it's like a reservoir, you can put in systems, some systems have you five, six hundred pounds, something like that, with the mountain stairs. That's, and drawing bladder tanks, where if you let the pressure come back and hit a tank, it's not full, it's, it's, of course, filled up, and then it eases back out, so as the pressure goes down.
What's true with that building or the tons, that will increase things, but?
Uh, that's, anyway, over, over Schumaker Town, they, then, we would fight.
And do that, so that, like, we did, or the, kind of, daughter district, that, in order to like, to go there.
That's what they do in the new highway.
Okay.
When they did that, I don't think.
Okay, I was wondering, okay.
Just take different parts of it, and then they get that time wing, just one day.
I was not sure if that was causing problems on our end.
Well, anything.
Or that, that's the way I sort of took it.
Also, it's, it's over here now, but there's still kind of that, so.
So you mean, but it's, it's gonna be, you know, you do.
I asked you today, and you said you were out, you were checking, and I was like, oh, you guys are mine, see, that's, why I need to, it's been in me. I got lobby over there. Well, I think we should give them off to the towers, maybe just, they'll, we work with the telescopes, it's gonna be, it'll get pretty sure, plus, didn't count, I'm lying here, so. I didn't see anything, there's only like, five, six items on the agenda, I didn't see anything, like, your water, your water crew, that'd be cheap.
Another way, do we have, this is still on this topic, that I have a, Mark's conversation about, I just wanna see you, Mayor, again, we got based on S S S. Don't we call them, we call them the white wall?
They are looking over their big work now, they just got to, it's a big book. I asked about it, and they said they'll call us just as soon as he gets out of it, because he has a lot of questions. And that book, we also have it on the apps, and they're working on it.
All right.
The proposal of the plea property, uh, when I first looked over there, the man came in wanting to talk about the plea property, he wasn't bringing a precious, a five evidence, a small cracker, and a small long one. Lost it, he went away, now he's back. And he wants six and a half papers of the plea form, and wants the council will think about busting that up. And then Chrissy talked to you.
So, I mean, you all have the proposal, what he's asking, um, he's more than willing to come and talk to you all, but he just wanted to make sure this is something that you're even interested in pursuing. Before you come down, so that I can give you the map of the layout, which we can change that, or, or that, how we have to. What he's offering and everything, so this is something that you all think you're interested in, and I can make a point with him, have him come to next council meeting, or go in, do that.
So he's looking at just the area within the purple box, correct?
Yeah.
What did he come to yours, and that's what he told me, what's maybe the question?
The last time I spoke to him, he had said, mentioned something about the retail, like, something kind of like the tractor supply place, that kind of, and everything, so, I don't know.
That would get, I don't know.
I don't want it.
The one, the intersection, you understand, for the city?
For what?
For this, for possible.
Not polluted.
Um, what I've been told in that state, that there's a culvert there, right, Gary, on the clean, that's why that's blocked up, but that's.
Probably, yeah, yeah.
It's like a huge drain, if, if you get a blast, you, I can't, if I come where, yeah.
Because they're in twenty seven, five million.
Negotiating something.
Right, he just missed a few all of the different, I just want to know if you all are interested, or if you're simply, I should talk to him. Talking about, to see what the mains are, if we've been, if we've decided, have contracts, have committed from some franchise that he was planning on bringing in, nothing misleading. We don't wanna, we wanna be sure above the limit.
So you all will do that committee, or do a special meeting?
Do you have a special meeting to meet?
I don't want to be, I just don't want to be bothered with that. Is he pulling more of some property?
All the time. Um, you want to do franchise, you have to have an agreement involved table? Can I discuss this the last time, and then they tabled to get with Brian Thompson, that's why she bought the encouragement permits, doing that with franchise and things? Um, Brian says the county has their encouragement permit, like, on ordinance, so he says we can use that to kind of do our own encouragement, we're okay with that, Mr. Duncan? And do that, and then we just get, we may want to do, and our, do the franchise. Now, I don't think you all are worried about the fee, you don't have to charge us any kind of fees for this, it's just, I don't think you all are wanting to do that, because I'm an intern, but that fee's not a problem. But we just haven't had an agreement with them since, what was it, seven or something like that? So, there's, that's, I think, it takes like six months to get it all going, but this means a lot of, but it's a process. And then the ordinance will be able to review everything, or actually prove anything, but we just can't do anything until we do all.
So you'll be working on Brian Thompson to get that franchise.
I wonder why they, Brian.
Just be approved.
Just that, yeah.
Duke has, uh, master ordinances, sample ordinances they can use.
Could you talk a little bit about the difference between those two, with my trust agreements and the governance ordinances?
Well, franchise agreement comes out of the Kentucky Constitution, Kentucky Constitution says that any public way, uh, for someone to use it for their benefit, they need a franchise. And they've had franchises in the past, and their franchise department sort of let everything slip, and some cities didn't catch it, all three in line. The encouragement permit, I'm not sure exactly what we're talking about.
They're gonna be, they're like, cutting into.
Oh, okay, I see what you, yeah, they're gonna be cutting into our street and stuff like that.
See, we don't have anything.
We need a ordinance that sets out specifications for when they cut into our streets, and so I don't understand.
I was talking about that, I guess they kind of give somebody twenty, thirty thousand a year for some ordinances.
So it's what he was saying, like, using, using, using.
They're kind of torturing, they do that.
Yeah, right.
Right, so, I'm seeing, you, you, like, the spectrum country, I imagine.
Well, last year, yeah, cut into all of our streets, I mean, we still have a big gap in our yard where that had cut through, where it wasn't proper, all of it back, and, yeah.
We kind of do it on that, too, because the spectrum's doing a lot of work, we're gonna do, and stuff like that, kind of, so, we have to have those.
Maybe, is that just a motion to proceed?
Yes.
Supporting businesses, I need it. Well, I would like to see, uh, the city be involved with supporting new businesses that are opening, like, in a grand opening type of event, ribbon cutting type ceremony, something that shows our support back to the local businesses. Um, mainly right now, in present, is Sugar Pies is doing their grand opening on March fourth, and, um, I've been asked by a couple of people if we were gonna do some type of ribbon cutting, so I don't know if that's something that we can set out to do.
So, Tourism Council, Saturday at the, uh, Chit and Frang meeting, Billy Matthews Austin, President of the Chamber, which is under one major revitalization right now, uh, but he brought up the idea that we need to have, like, a ribbon cutting ceremony, and he wanted to pitch it to Donna, Pat Walter, um, to say, can we do a ribbon cutting ceremony? So I think, first and foremost, we need to figure out what they're doing in regards to new businesses, and I think they need to figure that out, so, I think they would say that, if Billy was here, he would say that they need to figure out what that looks like, but, um, we could definitely reach out, I think, and say, can we be a part of that process, in addition to the county, because it's, you know, we all want to show our support to new businesses.
Your confirmation, your appreciation.
I would say resolution, or.
Your resolution.
Confirmation, yes.
You also have, remember, it's, we have two of the jolly down the line, with the river stop, is that, that you're supposed to? Yeah, so he's also putting more sessions. Is that called on?
On, on.
So there would be a, that one, so.
That's what we picked up?
Good question.
I, I can, 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 I can,[839.92]
He took it back like it was.
Yeah.
The two lighting where that's all.
Neon, the neon light, the neon light. I just remember the spotlight on it. I don't remember the neon.
How long ago did he send it?
He took it about two weeks ago or something.
He actually said when he was on council, he started that and he called me and he said, "I'd like to finish that." He said, "I have it out. You can fix that, hang it up, put the neon lights by it and everything." And he said, "Then I'm gonna have it for backup." So I said, "I think that would be great."
And we had sent somewhere.
I promise you.
And they said, "There's nothing very perfect."
You're gonna do it.
And then back when.
He's gonna, he's gonna.
Now, he said, "Nothing else but skin." To keep the original look, maybe the original leather. Not even. Nothing that really wants to do with it. This wouldn't stay right. The neon lights.
It will always be nice. Just as a few things.
Here's, here's the one, excuse the one, where they put that new bridge in there or a problem.
Yes.
They've done everything with paint, they're already.
I talked to David about this, whereas David said, "We're supposed to feel like we make that all just push it around."
What was that for you? Did that degree thing?
Yeah, I know. He's like, "I'm sorry, he's like, "He's like, "I'm sorry." He says that their foot rod, I'm saying rod is about that. He said, "He's like, "I'm sorry." He was like, "Just remove it." It was by line.
Yeah. That's not too bad. It's still. Very handy. All the little cameras.
Yeah, when I talked to one of the magistrates, I said that after a while, when it starts to age, it'll look really. It's just a process. I didn't, it's more like I say.
There's like, I said, "Oh, nothing's out there."
Right, and that's why. Unless what they're gonna say.
Just a few things for me, guys, and just with you all. While I told them, we will be sending out notices when the bills come, let everyone know the party's at mission when we start. But those costs done, so that's gonna be on the sum. We're almost done with our website. Don't have a picture of you on it or a bio if you want it, include one. You can run it, but everybody else's. Everyone's been asking about the ordinance, is the codification being online? We can do that. There's a charge. It's five hundred, uh, five ninety-five for the initial setup. And then it's four fifty a year. So, we've not included that, so I think if we just get through this rest of this year and we'll start with our new budget, we can include that to have our ordinances on the website at that time. Because right now, when the website launches, you know, we'll have changes and kind of things we want to tweak. So this at least, let us go ahead and do that, and we can wait because it's a thousand dollars.
Just have the ordinance on there and call that march? You can't just all look through that?
Um, to hack this through the publishing company, that does our stuff. This is through them to do it, so that everything, um, there may be another way to do it on our own if we want to visit that, but with the publishing company to do it, now that other city has it for the codification, that's what the price is. So it'd be four fifty a year after we paid our initial cost. We can have, do you all want to pursue with them or is the other avenue? Well, I don't have that many records requests for code of order, the ordinances, but I have some. And I know.
If, if, if we're gonna wait till the new budget, then.
I know, see, but sometimes we have trouble with updating our old books that you all did. That's what, how to do that anymore. We have to pay the books because it will all be there. So I mean, it's kind of like how it's out.
I would say, I would love it if it was searchable, if it was, you know, media, if it was new to you, like a Macbeth and a search file.
Right, I think, because when we get that book back, we always have to throw it, because we're not there, so. It'll probably be more searching. At the end of the day, we have to maintain, to get, to figure what we need to. We can do that. We'll do that on our website.
And you're just saying, so you're just saying, the publishing company of the actual ordinances on that, put it on the website. That's up to us, and we put, upload media to that. It's a publishing company that's charging that energy.
It's like, if you go to like, let's see, what's the city that have? I felt, you know, you see all their ordinances on here. Do you all have it?
So it's not the website company that's charging that, the publishing company?
No, it's like, well, she'll not, she needs to have it.
Just want to clarify. All they're doing is.
Code, what it is.
Yes, I've been.
But it's a lot.
Is it clickable? It is.
Oh, it's just each thing.
Oh, that works.
Like, so I think that is the, like, to the law, it's easier. It has one huge job, but it's like, that's a lot of time. It's pretty nice. I'm creating and setting up. There's copies on that every year that all slides for me.
I think money for them.
I think money was that. To hire the factories. There's pretty much only another thing for the website.
Well, picking up the website. I know, um, I've had tons of complaints about when people call City Hall, they can't get anybody.
We can only answer so many calls. But I get a lot of people that want to call twenty times and they can't leave us a voicemail. So we ask them, "Please leave us a voicemail when we're trying to call." I'm there sometimes late when they call.
Yeah.
But if you just keep calling us and we're on the phone, we can't answer you. I'm sorry. We try, but we can't. If you leave us a voicemail, we will call you back. But some people just don't.
But it's, well, no, when they, you know, you know, I guess they feel like it's not, you know, that it's not ringing in the City Hall. They're just getting a voicemail and nobody's.
Wait, racing the City Hall.
Well, maybe they're not choosing the number. You have to. Only got, leave a one number. Bring them in and you have to choose which line he wants, so maybe that's sort of their. I'm hoping once the website's done, that's gonna cut down a lot of our calls, because we're on the phone a lot with credit cards. Paying a credit card payment takes a lot of time. I mean, you're just talking with someone just to get all that. So I'm hoping once we get this and people are going online to do that, that's gonna cut down our times on the phone and be able to answer more calls.
You're probably just sorry, I'm sorry. When will that be live?
I'm hoping to be able to do it with this. I'm hoping for this utility bill. Because we've almost got everything to them, and even if we don't have all the pictures and everything we want, we can still get it started. And she's got everything that she needs as far as our links and stuff for utilities, so. If our website's not as pretty as everybody wants it when it first goes, we can always fix it, but at least we'll be able to one day pay our utility bill. Go on there and do that.
And you do on that? Tell it to on-line, we take it.
Um.
On-line.
Probably, because I know, like, it's supposed to be set up kind of like how Bluegrass operates, and I know I can do that through Bluegrass, so.
Yeah.
Probably.
Not really.
No, for sure, but we can see about that too. We have had our training on it, get to see how it all works, but just ready to get it started.
I know, um, maybe it's this table, the last time, uh, we got fourth of July coming up. And we started planning on that. It's a big event that needs to start kind of now. And I know it was talked about the tourism council, uh, maybe doing something. Um, I would like you to see that done the fourth of July, hosting the fourth of July, the city council downtown.
What do you want to do?
Um, maybe mention that the tourism county take care of the fourth of July fireworks and the parade and the events that go on downtown.
I mean, talk with the tourism council?
So, uh, tourism council invited the city to Saturday, March, February fourth, um, planning meeting.
Right.
Spats was there, I was there, Amy, First and Spencer were all there. The conversation that they're wanting to have and that we're wanting to have is to open the doors to have a partner event, so it's not one organization taking on.
Working conjunction.
Work in tandem with everything that's going on. Here's an example, is that on Halloween, you know, Kenny Spiker puts on the amazing Trumper Creek event. Well, that's at the athletic fields, which is away from the homes in downtown. So why can't we all work together to have it in the middle of the street? So they want to go to the houses right down the street. That's an example of how we can partner together to create a better event for the community.
I think that was tried before and they couldn't come to, that was on for this term, so maybe we can try it again. Every mark had a mark.
Just to be like, you know, the Trumper Creek, that'll come when the people settle along, on downtown, this community.
Yeah, that's what we, but we have, that's what we've been working today. The dogs and a few others as well.
So again, that's just an example. I'm not saying that we're going down that route for Halloween, second of the fourth of July. My thing is, can we open the doors to create some kind of collaborative partnership with different events? Um, yes, because that could stick you with money, absolutely, but can we somehow come to the same, come in the same room with the county, the tourism council, any of the partnering organizations to create some kind of collaborative festival committee or group, where multiple people from different organizations sit on that, so that we can delegate who's gonna take care of what?
Where we're all working together for one.
Because what's happening is we're all doing our own thing, and a handful of people are going with this, a handful of people are going with this, when in this small community that we already work together on multiple things, we can all come in the same area to make, make something happen. So that's the conversation with tourism to have. Um, I don't think they're necessarily saying, "We want to take it all on." We have the funds to do it, quite honestly. However, if we all came together and said, "County, you take on a portion of this." I don't know. FCCA at high school, can you take, take on a portion of this? That way, we're all benefiting from things, and it's a truly a community-wide event rather than just, the city's doing this tonight, and oh, next weekend, the county's doing this.
But we need a, a leader.
We do. There needs to be an organization or a committee, but, um, it can't lie just in the hands of one organization for it to be a successful partnership.
You're the chairperson of the festival committee, what's your charge?
I was. I was asked to do that several years ago. I took it over, and I took it in a different level than when it had been before, because all I heard was complaints was, "We have a parade and it's over." I myself personally initiated for the Halloween, because we are a community that is a part of a bedroom community, whether you like it or not. And we have a lot of individuals that do not want to go from there because they're afraid. So we moved it out town. The first year, it was right here in the very back of this building. And the number of individuals we fed was unbelievable. Next year, we took it out behind what used to be the Catsbury Place. And again, we have a large number of turnout. Everything is gone. We went out town so we could cover more people. And again, like you said, for anyone that wanted to participate. We have never closed it out to anyone that wanted to be there or wanted to help in any way. Ninety percent of the Halloween events, I have myself financially taken care of. With the help of Stan and Whiteblood, they too contributed and gave them their time. Different ones have helped through the last few years without us taking a toll. And we have grown to where we're giving away anywhere from two to three thousand hot dogs on Halloween. It's right downtown, it's in front of everyone, and anyone that wanted to participate could come and do so. It's been the same way with Christmas. It's been the same way with the Fourth of July. The only difference is adding more for all to enjoy. It's not been just a couple of things that everybody goes home. And then I'd like to see whether or not this is gonna be a part of this. There have been, now this is for the town of Halloween, anyone wanting to help, call, come, step forward. Anything you want to do, anything you're capable of doing, just come on and help us out.
I think that's what they're offering now.
Great, so we're offering that. Um, with all due respect, um, in regards to what work's been done, I am not discrediting any work that's been done. However, I said it at the last meeting, and I'll say it again. I don't feel that, just my opinion, I don't feel that the council's duty is to feed everyone in the community. And while hot dogs getting out is wonderful, that's amazing, is it within the scope of the city's duty to do that? Could it be a partner organization that breaks even on it?
I'm not familiar with it. What are you talking about feeding everyone? What are you saying?
Giving out hot dogs. That's amazing that we're giving out those free foods, but again, at, at the end of the day, what's the intent of, um, an event downtown? Is it to give a festival to people to enjoy, have a fun-filled family, community-wide event, or is it to come get free food? So I think we have to distinguish that as a city, or we want to continue that with free food for the community, which, hear me say, is great that we're doing it, but could it be filled by another organization and make those, such as?
Other organizations?
Local churches.
Churches, who do a lot of similar things like that.
Well, the churches do, open their doors and do the same thing along with us. Especially, we're not the only ones. Every one up in now Shelby Street does the same thing. They're already participating in that now.
On the same day, at the same time, they're all there?
Exactly.
Halloween anyway.
What's that?
At Halloween, all the churches participate, uh, even, uh, people that wasn't nowhere around, you know, they break down chili or whatever, you know. But the churches would open up their doors and was giving the, our, uh, sandwiches and everything at Halloween. Now, fourth of July, they just, they didn't come around, you know.
And again, so I'm not, Halloween was an example, so I'm going back to fourth of July, Christmas. What can we do to bring other organizations in to partner with us on this event? All events. So it's not just talking about Halloween, here's what we do, Christmas, here's what we do. How can we create a committee that's working together with groups, so that we're all able to fulfill certain needs? Um, and again, I heard you say to me, Long One, that you have total funding volunteers, and people don't come forth all the time. Well, other organizations have that exact same issue, but if we all work together and put forth our certain amount of volunteers, take on certain sections of the event, we're gonna get things done quicker. We have to partner together. We are too small in force to try to take it all on ourselves. We don't have the funds, none of the organizations have the funds to do it themselves. So my, I guess my proposal, I would say, is to figure out how we can bring those groups together to say, who can take on certain portions of this? Um, I, I don't know how open the council will be to exploring something like that, or what the next steps would be, but. I bring it up because I do feel like it's an issue. It's an ongoing issue. We always have conversations at every single council meeting. What's the committee doing? How are the funds spent? So it's obviously an issue that needs to be addressed. Um, I would welcome any other input from the council on what next steps or what could be done.
We're not a polite city, but we're also part of the county, and I think that needs to be in collaboration. And I'm gonna say, like it used to be. It used to be a county-wide event for Pendleton County Day, which was the fourth of July. The Christmas parade was a county-wide event. Um, I would just like to see more collaboration there between.
Look, when we all started doing this, when we, uh, started doing it on the fourth of July and stuff like that, the reason we didn't have other groups with us is because they wanted to sell their stuff. Fourth of July festival was more or less given back to the taxpayers. Okay, giving it back to the unfortunate ones and everybody else. But the other groups that wanted to get with us and do this, they wanted to put up booths and make money for themselves. That wasn't our, our ideal when we, we started the fourth of July festival. That was before it was Pendleton County Day.
Still, the funds donated.
If, if you recall, we had a booth out there in the middle of the street, and people selling pretzels, or people selling hot dogs, or having games and all that, if you recall. Well, they didn't like the idea of, uh, giving their, you know, in other words, donating their, their stuff. They donate their time, but they wouldn't donate your stuff. It wasn't, it wasn't like a relay for life, you know, when you were selling stuff and that. So we said, "Well, we're gonna have, you know, have to do it this way." People didn't want to do it.
No, wait, what, you're talking about?
The other organizations didn't want to do it.
Are you talking about when we used to do Pendleton County Day, where we used to have two days, like a Friday and Saturdays?
Right, and they had booths setting up and that.
And it was great. They had music, they had everything.
And, uh, we had, uh, American Legion, everybody was out there.
And then into the city, it's like, but city. But that wasn't all given away. I'm not being.
No, no.
I have one question.
I have one question. Why is it so hard for you to understand that there's nothing wrong with giving back to the community to the people that have voted for you and put you in a position that you're sitting in right now? And you don't care enough to want to get them a hot dog?
Hear me say that.
Between providing a thank you to the whole community, the whole county.
The whole community is always invited, always.
However.
But it's specifically tailored to the looking for that question.
It's open to everyone.
Sherry, I have heard, I, I came down for Christmas and witnessed the event. I was there. I stayed there and watched the whole thing unfold. And while I think it's great, there are multiple families that after that parade happened, they left, because they said, "This is just catering to giveaways, and we want to enjoy a family-friendly event." I'm just calling it like I see it. I'm not saying that we're not supposed to give things away or give back to our community. Hear me say that. I work for, I work for two nonprofits. I definitely think we need to give back to things. I'm the first one to say that. However, our duty is to serve our citizens, and if we're using taxpayer dollars, even if you donated your own funds, we're using any of that at all. We're not breaking even or spending money on it. We're not bringing a large group of people into the community to spend money or spend their day or spend their time. We're not doing, we're not serving our constituents. We're just giving things away to a certain group who comes to that. And that's not serving our constituents. What they're telling me, they're leaving out at the parade because they see giveaways, they don't like that. And then those who do get things given away to them, get incorrect things, and they get upset and have complaints to the city. So to be honest with you, there's nothing wrong with it, however, it's broken right now, and that's just the way it is.
That's your opinion.
It is my opinion.
I think, I think we.
It's a citizen's.
Well, okay, we're saying hundreds, this, this area of, ten thousand. And you can't, you can't, you can't sacrifice the ninety percent or two tiers of the ten.
So you don't want to be a thing in the community, is that what you're saying?
You can give things.
Don't want to use.
I think you're talking about content.
I don't like to clarify, but I would like to clarify one was that we want to work together to make this better. We're not taking anything away from anyone. We want to work together as multiple groups to make this encompass and be better.
I think, I think it would be bigger.
And we're happy with the last.
I think it'd be, we just got a lot bigger than everything else.
Exactly.
And everybody, you know.
I, I've been working with my clubs separately.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Get involved.
I've been on Relay for Life Committee for ten years, been giving back, I've been serving different capacities. That is mainly how we've been trying to serve our community. So it's very ill of you to say that we haven't been trying to help our community.
Your perspective?
It is not my statement.
You know, also, also too, would even, if, if we all did this together, it would recognize the tourism. It would recognize, uh, American Legion or whatever, you know, if we go out and get everybody to, and it would be big. I mean, I can remember when the Far House lot over there was big, uh, was American Legion, French, uh, having, uh, fish fries out there. I mean, everybody was involved, but we won't be able to give it away, you know, it's, it's gonna, and. What I have found out too is the people that gets the stuff free, after it's over with, I mean, they expect it now.
Exactly.
You know, I, I mean, I'm sorry to say, but a lot of them expects to, uh, to have that on fourth of July.
I would like to see more of our school organizations and our, more of the local clubs, like Rotary and Lions Club, and I mean, there's the Democratic Club, the Republican Party, you know, everybody working together like one community once again.
Search and rescue.
Which goes along with the tour, search and rescue, I mean, all of that working together. I think that would be great. Table, you've got the motion on table, but there's been a lot of discussion after that. Someone wants to state the motion, how you want it, the way we get it right.
Oh, I think we're trying to do.
Do you want someone else, you want to just let this one fail and let it pass me though?
I am making the motion that we revise the Donald Festival Committee and vote the members.
Do you have what you, what you all do?
And that's been a while, for two years, and I don't know where to add. And, and, no, just to get a collaboration of members, a collaboration.
I would say, you know, another friendly amendment to that could be also that we, um, have inclusion for multiple organizations in the community. That could mean you still serve on that committee. It doesn't mean that you're taken off of that. That means that it's multiple organizations working together to create the committee. No one said that.
Do you have that in your motion, April, you need to?
Do we have the Donald Festival Committee work in collaboration with other organizations?
I think that's a big place, the bylaws of the Donald Festival Committee, when the new members have been in. I think just making the motion to revise the Festival Committee is all we really need to do at this point.
Yes.
So you want a motion to revise the Festival Committee, and that's it, or to revise the Festival Committee and collaborate with other communities or?
Well, I can be a part of the bylaws of the new Donald Festival Committee.
Do we have bylaws?
Have, so I mean, we create them. Um, these are, excuse me, I don't know, to the organization.
So do we have something that outlines what the Donald Festival Committee does? Is there a? Is there some type of document ordinance that was?
Um, I don't know.
With the Donald Festival Committee? Shouldn't there have been something with that since it's, was it funding with a committee?
There was, there was no, uh, set rules or anything else. It was, uh, we knew it was gonna be done and, uh, there was, uh, three or four other people wanting, but they didn't like to do it the way they did it, so Mark Hart asked if we could get somebody else, you know, and so we got.
Mayor, with all due respect, do we not do a small work group of council members or a committee of us to come up with what that looks like outside of a council meeting, so that we're speaking on kind of wisely, not having to take up hours of this meeting to do that?
So just motion to revise Festival Committee then?
Yes.
Hi.
I want you to just call it, Donald County Festival. That's impossible.
I just realized.
Could, could you just by chance send letters out to different organizations, schools, or stuff like that?
And I think once they get that revision made, what are the duties, who we're working with, I, I, I mean, I think that's what we're going towards right now.
That's not vision and class.
Or the purpose is have a purpose and mission, who we want to collaborate with, you know, the members that are currently on it, if they still want to serve, how is that going to work? Once we have that written down, then we can go on from there, give them contact.
Uh, in the past, I'm sorry.
Go on, what ain't carrying first, I'll wait. Go on, sir, I'll wait.
Yeah, in the past, it was back when I was growing up here, but we used to have street carnivals, car shows. Uh, Friday, Saturday night dances out there in front of the post office. There were a lot of different ways we could raise money.
Right, your own lunch group?
Yeah.
The government fixed it, so if you bought insurance for it, it's only got, you had to buy this massive insurance to have that stuff. But, but you can't hardly have anything like that anymore. It would be nice if you could have like little cars and all the stuff. Nineteen, here's what brings back my memory, nineteen seventy-six, when we had all that stuff at Butler. I can remember that.
And bicentennial here.
Bicentennial, yeah, it was awesome. But now you can't even get those things. You can't, you're, if there's so much insurance in the real market.
Yes.
I love that though.
I wonder if possibly when I can get my stuff back, it's been three months. I'm, I'm, what's?
Hey, you can come to office tomorrow and we'll talk. Okay? The festival business, it doesn't need to be done.
I, I just, thanks, I'm trying to ask.
Come into the office and see us.
Okay.
Yes, it did.
I have a question for all of you. Is there ever a meeting that the Butler State Council, Fountain City Council, and the magistrate get together, and the public can come and be along with all of them to listen to y'all? Or do they fight amongst each other and stuff?
So I brought that up at the last meeting. I brought that up at the last meeting, that our meeting falls at the same time with the county does. And tonight, we have questions of the county that couldn't be addressed because their reading falls asleep. So again, I think it'd be awesome if we could work with the mayor, the governor, and the judge to see if there's a way we could figure out how we can, A, collaborate, and B, not meet on the same nights.
And then we would have to alter change. If we were to change, then our ordinance would have to change, same as saving our meeting. Since the county also has that ordinance, you said you're looking at a whole.
Right, but our leaders.
Right, right. But they also meet, the court meets twice, then each twice. It's right in one year.
Twice a month, plus a month.
And I can answer two of the questions from the special board. The, uh, they approved the purchase, and they were willing, they approved to pay twenty-five hundred, and they also agreed that the city would own it outright.
There you go, you're waiting on us, and you got a question?
Got a question real quick, you know, I'm gonna ask you some, so I have you all here. Uh, I know you mentioned probably to all of you individually, possibly here and there, about these whiskey barrels, put like on the corners of the street down here. And actually, I, I have a bunch of them, and I actually will donate them out of care. I bought them actually thinking you guys would buy for how cheap I got them, but I'd just like to get this, look, spring around the corner. I put the flowers, I put flowers, fill them up with the corners, and make the corners look nice, and. This is that one person, if I were her, she would, and she's, and all that, trying to get them all the way down the show, drink on. This is that one person, if I were her, she would, and she's, and all that, trying to get them all the way down the street on each corner. You guys are all okay with me, I've got them on trail already, though.
Would you maintain them, for example?
Yeah.
I'm just asking, to be honest with you. The only concern I have, just the only concern I have about that is they are metal at the base, right? So, they're not, they would, okay. My only, my only concern would be that if they had rust, there'd be a bunch of rust stains on it. I mean, I'm all, yeah, I'm all supportive of them.
I've got them on that porch, I can move them.
That would be my concern about permanent placement.
You know, if you're not on a limb, you can put my bike on the tent up there. And you're, you're, is if you're actually, is if you're actually selling the sidewalk, then... You're, you're all stuff like that, I don't know. Right, it's weird.
One quick thing. Yes, that we see, may I have a sign that we were paid in the, did we get that?
That's a good question. No, that's a good question, we're gonna, we should just go ahead and answer this.
Yeah, I'll talk to you, okay? Yeah, we'll do that.
I didn't want to all, it's about, it's about, what you want, what you think.
You're not allowed to. Well, I hate your mom. Uh, I hate saying your mom. I can certainly...
The people on the road actually got them on.
I can not control that, what you say, that's a letter or a...
They actually do it for like a week, about a month.
As you were, as you were, you, Rick, what year has, oh...
Rick, and several of those people up there, Dick Seale and the son, a couple of them.
There are two lights that are up there and are out, they want to know if we would put back.
They haven't been on, they, they, they was there, but they've not been there. One of them was there years and years ago. It's, it goes in bluegrass, it's an old light there, everybody's living lights aren't working, nobody's getting paid. It's bluegrass, somewhat lights out in Harbor Ridge. You know, with the lights in Harbor Ridge, I think, the more they just talk about it, or, or taxpayers, because we don't have any lights either. So there's two posts up there that they have to be paid off from bluegrass, she's had to pay off bluegrass. I've actually talked to them, they get LED lights, uh, for eleven forty-five each month selection. And that's kind of what those people are looking to do, just want like a needed Harbor Ridge.
Plus it's a hazard, not a hazard right there.
It is city, it is city street, and, uh, very many of them are...
Okay, because I was wondering, I have heard of this.
It's right in the corner, before you go around, put it in the right control. There's two posts there. And that's one of the ways... No, Cami is on the bottom. Cami locks that pathway, goes up maybe a foot or two.
So don't you go around them?
When you go in the curb, that's all shit.
It is.
I think that city is actually city, or the curb is actually city now, because Cami lets, they come back up, so this is your option. Even in curves.
So does the city pay for the parks?
It's, it, don't know, I don't know. When they did, when they built the house in Craig Holmes, I think that's when they said, hey, there's a life there, nobody's paying the world care at all. So they just snagged it. It's been good for years and years, but I guess maybe the people up there are getting older.
Yeah.
They're wanting to realize. And I think there's some possibilities that future about moving in some, some will be changed in your life.
Yeah, so, I guess I'll make a motion, we're gonna like, and... Yes, I want to make a motion. I want to make a motion to, um, for Jennifer to do the, she's dummy, her time in the pots. Correct. I just want to make sure, so I think that should be done, I'm gonna make that motion.
Second.
Yes, yes.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to give the pikes back.
My second. So then we look at sports, so we don't like have scenes...
Yes, we're getting one, we're getting one, we're getting one.
Oh, yes, uh, that's my blog on the city ordinance, I haven't touched this one before, where you are our city ordinance officer?
We're not, yeah, we're not, we...
All right, well, some of the ordinances that we have here, that I know a lot of people complain about, or normally kind of thinking about it, mainly for the life of just issuing out these, um, these letters. Uh, the way they ordinance it's written, they don't have to be cited, by the way. So as far as that citation, whatever, we don't really need that to actually issue out written notices. That comes from the, the city hall, right? It says, for writing out these, uh, written letters for people that are, um, in contradiction with the ordinance. Uh, for this, it says, where a nuisance situation is discovered, the chief of police, who's not on here, shall give a five days' written notice regarding the nuisance situation. Uh, notice shall be mailed to the last known address of the owner of the property as the police are currently processing. Some ordinances I see that definitely need work on, apart from getting a book issued out, is the nuisance laws. The very first one I see here that I see everywhere is the accumulation of rubbish. Um, and this is straight out of books. And accumulation of many premises, filth, refuse, trash, garbage, or any other waste material which endanger the public's safety, welfare, health, material interference with the peaceful enjoyment of owners' occupants of these apartments. Meaning they don't have to look at the garbage. So, I can drive around the city right now and probably point out at least fifty places that are in violation of this. And I think as far as, one of the biggest things the city has as far as getting anything done, just like extending up the leaves, the trash, it's all money. It's all, it's all money. And the second we start taking care of this ordinance and removing this kind of filth, trash, whatever it is, property buyers are gonna go out. And with those property buyers going, they'll owe the taxes. So that's just gonna generate more income for the city. Everyone's property's gonna be worth more, everyone's gonna be happy. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be doing this, and we have it going again. Another one is junk, scrap metal motor vehicles. Any motor vehicle that's been unable to, unable to, more than ten days, it ain't supposed to be in the driveway. So there's like, for instance, on South Liberty, I know that's where a motor will live. The house next to it has probably five or six vehicles parked in there, two or three of which are running out. They have bots, they're driving bots up the streets. Some people have courses in their yards, driving bots. The building right behind the old pizza factory that were renovated, you, I'm sure, you've been there multiple times, they have bots. They've got, just, they were down there working, I have videos on my phone. They're driving bots racing along Main Street, or up and down Shelby. No one's, no one cares, literally racing their bikes up and down.
There's nothing, no one cares.
Well, I know they care.
Very tall, we'll go, and I haven't answered calls over there.
Well, I mean, I know there's nothing in here about that, but are citizens allowed to drive their bikes and bots in streets? Are they allowed to drive lawn mowers?
No. They allow them to do it during the summer because they're going to most different yards. That's what they have. That's what they have, young men who drive the wagons at night, and evening, final warning, if you caught again, we're citing, we're gonna pound this door. That's what we're, ladies, wasn't real happy about, but that's just too bad.
I'm not too happy about it either.
And they kind of, they have cited them for...
Yards that have junk piled up, things like that. I am issuing notices, I am doing that, okay? We haven't got to the point where we got a letter ready to go.
We have sample letters that we can use. I mean, the city used to do old times sample letters before, I mean, that's a place apart, and the cozy and all that, we used to sign off on. We tried that.
We need to get together, see what we got, and then start handling, I mean, whether we use the energy to, to issue them, or myself.
Okay.
You know, I know you guys are very busy up there, I understand, so we... You can have Gary fill in the blanks, we know he's not going all the way, so...
Oh, I guess this is, wanted to be code enforcement, just to take care of it, I mean...
Again, it's also, we're gonna, we're gonna tackle this by installing, putting notices in everybody's wills. So everybody gets a letter saying, hey, this is what's coming out, get it cleaned up, you know? So we're going, and believe me, I am, I'm handing out notices, putting door handles out, you know? Also need names of people who own some of these vacant properties. Say, look, you need to secure this building, we need to cut the grass. If we ain't going to do it, and I need to board up the windows, whatever we have to do, I mean, we need to charge them significantly.
Well, and this, this is...
That's the cost of the work, but take...
The mayor is offering to send employees, city employees, or agents upon the property to determine the situation and abate the nuisance. So if they don't do it within five days, the city...
Yeah, what I feel about it, these guys, with these guys, that's...
But that's air, isn't it, though?
Right, right, after the notice, my thing is, with these guys being busy, money for Friday, there's something that they can do on the weekend. Fine, it's overtime, you don't want the property to pay.
Well, right, yeah.
So, we don't think these guys work from the regular workover this week. And Gary wants to sign a couple guys and go do something on the weekend, whatever it takes, equipment, man hours, time, materials, whatever. You build wood, put it on, I don't know, you attach it to your tax bill.
Yeah, that's exactly what you do.
So, you know, it's, we're, we're working on it, but you guys also, down the number now, I'm also, and also, I'm, you know, police officer too, so, you know, there is...
Is there a way that citizens can somehow report things without the armed police?
It's coming up, website, right?
Yeah, we have, okay.
It's coming up, in our access.
On your website, there's a place on there to go to fill out forms that put in complaints on, if you base a sentence against grass, you know, all on there.
Linda said it's gonna trigger as soon as you...
The code enforcement's triggered to you, yes.
Mary.
But they can send us to us too, and I...
If he gives a citation out, okay, and you don't do this within five days. I thought it was set up that the person goes in front of the code enforcement board. And the code enforcement board put, I mean, originally, this is the way it was set up. And the code enforcement board was supposed to put out the fine, okay? Then, then they had a chance to appeal it to the regular court. I mean, that's, that's the way it was originally set up, and I don't know if you change it after that or what.
You skip the step.
It's not gonna change, you just skip it.
You skip the step. If a citation is issued and they want to appeal it, they can appeal it to the code enforcement board. Then they could, if they, if they like to do it, they can appeal that to court.
It's only if they can appeal it.
Right.
Otherwise, they pay it.
The process is, the, the chief police issue the written letter. They have five days to rectify, if not, they're issuing a citation. Either they want to appeal it or not pay it, that's when they go to court. They just pay the fine and rectify the situation, that's it. If they don't want to pay the fee in court, they want to, you know...
Well, you, you know, when, when we was talking about this, you know, with, uh, the other council people, it was brought up that, you know, police would, ordinance officer would give the citation. And then, if you didn't have it cleaned up in five days or ten days, wherever they gave it, then we's given another paper saying you had to go in front of the code enforcement board. And the code enforcement board decided on what, what the fine was gonna be, a hundred dollars a day or whatever until you had it cleaned up.
Is the fine...
I think, yeah, sorry, it's a fact.
I mean, that, I mean, that's, that's the way we originally talked about it, you know, when Hart was mayor, and then we got around to it.
Well, I can tell you, there's been a couple of statute changes. We're, we're actually revamping that ordinance now, too. There was a separation between nuisance abatement and code enforcement. Now it's all under one set of statutes and we have to clean up our ordinances. Uh, until we do go, we can file that. And the other ordinances that are outside of nuisance, like plumbing and zoning and stuff, can go under code enforcement. But the code enforcement board only has to set the fine if there's an appeal. And they lose the appeal, then the code enforcement board sets the fine.
So next steps is that we can go draft a letter, right, for... So next steps is that we can get a draft letter right from.
Well, I don't think there's any like specific form that has to have a written letter out there. It's just like saying what violations, what code breaking, what's wrong and how we need to do this. That's a written, that doesn't have to be, um, that doesn't have to be.
Just sort of, yes. You said before, I don't know what you're giving on when you're, when you cite people already.
Well, I have, no, I haven't cited any. Because there was discussions and the emails were great and we were going to separate. I could have used just the city citation book, whereas it had a line for others, write it on there, there you go.
But I want the parking citations to be separate from the code enforcement, because I'm going to have to keep the parking board here as they separate and that from my code enforcement.
Right, I think what I'm talking about now is you two need to get together, notice a violation of that. You can't use a regular state citation, a city citation for code enforcement, because those statutes have a specified format that you have to announce. And I'll get that for you.
Okay, all right, no, that's fine.
It'll say, it'll say Alexander in Warsaw.
But I mean, we used to use one that's old, but I mean, just write on it what it is.
But we also can do that.
When we send in this letter, it has to go certain.
Yeah, that would be.
I got a question on the car, if anyone's judged of all this, the doors of the car, if the car was in the driveway for 10 days, something like that.
Yeah, 10 days.
Well, if the person pays, like their tags, their insurance on it, and they don't drive it for 10 days.
If it's, if it's able to be sat in, turned down and driven, it doesn't, but it's inoperable, for instance, a truck sitting on brakes.
So even like, especially I have a car in the driveway that's tagged, injured, but it's broke down.
If it's broken down, you got 10 days to have it.
And even in your driveway.
But if they're not tagged or they're insured, then they don't.
Well, they should, that's considered inoperable if they're not tagged. They shouldn't be driving without tags.
Well, I actually have just one quick question about this, that building down there that people were living in, a commercial building. They were saying that, I guess, since the new planning and zoning came in here, they can't really do anything with those people living in that, what building was that down there?
The water.
And they said that, that, that they're, since it's planning and zoning, they can't do anything about it because people's been living in it since planning and zoning came in, like before planning and zoning came in, they were already living there, so therefore it was considered. But, but wasn't there even a city ordinances or something that's going to be that that's still a violation before planning and zoning, that they're not allowed to be living in that building there or?
Brian, has I worked on that one for us? I don't know where he's. Is that the old west, Torma Village or Curves before the flood or his, yeah, that's where he was. He was across from us, yeah. And they've lived there a long, long time.